Services LLC, which is her firm. She's got numerous peer-reviewed articles, which I won't go through. She got her doctorate at University of Georgia, Go Dogs! And there are BS and MS at FSU. Mr. Bailey would go give me the chop. But with that, she has worked throughout in Florida, both jurisdictionally and consulting on areas around the state for both the Florida Department of Environmental Regulation, which is now the Department of Environment -- what is it? Florida Department of Environmental Protection, St. John's and others. She's testified as an expert, so in her case with ecological matters. And with that, Sidney, if you would lead us off, we'd appreciate it.
I'm going to begin by showing you very quickly the extent of the Florida aquifer system. And you are --
Sidney, I don't think your mic's on. You ought to get a little closer.
Sure. All right. The Florida aquifer system is subdivided into subregions. This is based on USGS reports. And I'll be showing you several graphics during the presentation, which are from publications that I'll have cited down at the bottom. I won't go into details there, but they're primarily USGS or other agency publications. Now, I have actually -- oops. How is my advancement here?
Can you just scroll?
Okay. Okay. The last time I was here, I did not mention the extensive scientific research that I have done in each of these subregions. And that spanned approximately 10 years. My experience with these systems extends beyond that. But basically, the scientific analysis of these hydrologic alterations were based on spectral analysis. And I used data sets from several different seasons, but the winter season ended up being highly correlated with assigned stress classes. And these stress classes were based on visual indicators of the premature decline, which are chronic stress, in each of the subregions of the Florida aquifer system. And the predictive accuracy of the winter data sets using models was 100% and 97% respectively in the two models that I prepared. This was done using analysis of partial least squares, linear discriminant analysis of second derivative spectral transformations in the near-infrared region, which was 1100 to 2500 nanometers. Now, I'm not going to bore you with any more of those details. I'm going to simply show you some examples and explain why these impacts occur. The environmental impacts are basically identical regardless of where you are in the Florida aquifer subregion, or which subregion you're in. And that extends throughout all of Florida, coastal plain of Georgia, Alabama, and South Carolina. These systems, the environmental systems, are depressional wetland systems that can be either forested, as shown here, cypress wetlands, pond cypress wetlands, or in marsh systems. And you can also have natural lakes, all of which are interconnected below the surface by a series of cross conduits or fracture systems. Now, a cross-section of these systems has been shown that the low permeability zones shown here in red, which are often misnomered as confining zones, are not continuous. They are discontinuous. And that allows for inter-mingling of water from the superficial aquifer and the lower aquifer zones. So in addition, these depressional systems are known to be aligned along fracture networks. These linear features here with the little circular features, these linear features are fracture networks that extend throughout the entire state of Florida, underlying where you're sitting and standing right now. So what that means is that you've got, in addition to the problem of displacement of water, you have the ability to have water transferred for great distances through these fracture systems. Now, if you try to get an idea of what happens with the volume displacement with a mine pit, if you imagine that this cube here is an area that's going to be mined, and the water is occupying the pore space where the solid material is not located, then if the water table is at or near the surface, as this triangle indicates here, when you remove the solid material, which generally is about 80% of the volume of that cube, then that means the water that remains, which is about 20%, has to drop to a lower level. Now, if no water moves in or out of that cube, then the water level would drop way down here. But in reality, water does flow into and out of, and even up and down through that mined cube. So that's the volumetric displacement, and that's the first problem with mining. The second problem is that you get an increased loss of water through evaporation. Now, this was a diagram that I used in my earlier presentation. It basically shows that your native vegetation, pines and cypress trees, as well as non-forested native vegetation, they are linked to that water table. And once you excavate a mine into that water table, then water is migrating into and out of that pit from surrounding areas, and it is also exposed to a higher rate of evaporation through loss. Now, the calculations that I used in my -- and this is from a published document, which was peer-reviewed, shows that in a pit, you get an increase in evaporative loss from -- in this case, there was 44 inches per year, pre-mining condition. Post-mining, it was 63 inches per year. Now, this was based on data from South Florida. Evaporative loss decreases as you increase up the state of Florida, so it will be not quite that high here. But based on those figures, say, for example, one of the mosaic mines, which was approximately 308 acres in size, would mean an evaporative loss of 147 million gallons per day. Per day. Now, that's the equivalent of three times the pumping from the well field in Miami-Dade County in 1997. Now, that's a huge amount of water being pumped out of those mine pits, non-mechanically. So in a USGS study, they actually collected evaporative loss data from a natural lake in Polk County, which would be a comparable evaporative loss to what you would experience here in Indian River County. And they found that the natural evaporation, natural evaporation from natural lakes was 57, approximately 57 inches per year, or 58 inches per year. And that also, those rates were considerably higher than the pan evaporation rates, which are used to calibrate the models that evaluate the impacts of the mining. Now, pan evaporation was 48 inches per year. So that report discussed the various possibilities of why pan evaporation, which is an actual measurement, was so much lower than the actual evaporation from a lake's surface. And I won't go into that now. But basically, the conclusion was that if net precipitation to the lakes, natural lakes, is negative over the long term, which in fact it was in this case, then the ability to generate net groundwater flow from the surrounding basin plays an important role in maintaining the lake levels. And that means if you dig mine pits, that you are now creating those greater evaporative losses, which are being compensated by the surrounding groundwater. Now, I'm going to very quickly discuss the role of hydrologic alteration as an environmental stressor. In 1999, the Scientific Advisory Board of EPA evaluated 33 top environmental stressors, and the top environmental stressor was hydrologic alteration. That stress in turn can lead to other stresses they evaluated, such as habitat conversion, alien species invasion, habitat fragmentation, disease pest outbreaks, physical habitat disruption, and altered hydrolog -- and altered fire regime. Now, I'm going to very quickly go through examples of these that have been documented through my research in different areas of the state. What happens after hydrologic alterations, such as what occurs from mining, is you get basal decay at the bottom of the trees. You can also get that or root rot will actually cause the trees to fall over. That's known as a wind throw. That's a pathological term. It's not actually the result of winds, such as hurricanes. It's the result of root rot and basal decay. That is similar to what happens in gum recession, where the gums recede and the part of the tooth that's exposed doesn't have that protective enamel. It's similar in trees. Once the soil subsidence occurs, those sensitive areas of the tree are exposed to pathogens, and they rot. In pine trees, the taproot will rot. As you see here, this taproot often is, extends extensively underground. When it rots off, the stability of the tree is lost. The trees topple over. This is actual branch or canopy decline, where the canopy becomes very small. It's covered with moss. The Spanish moss takes over the trees. You also get sinkhole development. Now, characteristics of decline include branch tip dieback, shown here in the cypress. And what happens is as a tree becomes stressed with this chronic water stress, the branch tips die back in increments, and the branches become shorter and shorter and shorter. And these are examples of those cases. You also get changes in the understory. Now, I'm very quickly going to show you examples within each of these subregions, just so you can see that it is consistent throughout the state, regardless of what specific geological formations may be present, or whether you're mining for sand, or shell, or rock, or phosphate, or whatever. In Hamilton and Taylor Counties, here, there's a small mine in this area that has, in my opinion, dewatered the Econfina River along 98. In Putnam County, there was a large sand mine complex here. And I'm going to show you Deep Lake and Smith Lake impacts over here. Scale bar is 3/10 of a mile, so this is more than a half a mile away from these mine pits here. This is an example of what happened to one of the natural lakes, Deep Lake, more than a half a mile from that sand mine. And here are USGS maps from 1949 and 1993 in the area of those sand mines. And you can see the exposed shoreline, where a number of these natural lakes are starting to recede from the groundwater level alterations. This is another set of mines in the southwestern portion of that county. And we're going to look at some photographs from a mile and a half from these mines and show you what's happening here. You've got subsidence around the base of the roots. You've also got root rot and decay of that taproot of the pines. You've got invasive species coming in throughout those wetlands, canopy decline and dieback and wind throw there. I also considered the rainfall data that went back into the 1800s, and the rainfall data was fairly consistent through that area, so that was not responsible for the damage. Now, in Volusia County, which is in your subregion, this is a stormwater pond that was dug and resulted in the dewatering of the cypress wetland in the background here. There's a similar stormwater pond in Indian River County. This was a stormwater pond, which is actually a small pit, where the dewatering has extended for more than 400 feet in a scrub area, which is considered xeric. But those areas are also very susceptible to dewatering. So you see dead pine trees here. You see the scrub oak dieback here. It's covered with an invasive parasitic vine, which is daughter. And this extends also with encroaching grapevines for more than 400 feet from this very small, relatively small stormwater pond that was dug. Then we've got, this is Hobart Park, which was an old mineral sand mine pit that is in northeastern part of the county. And you can see that pines have died both to the south. This is a north view. They've also died to the south, approximately 1,300 feet from that mine pit, which is an old mine pit. Now, here's a map from where I did some research in the western part of your county. And that was before I looked at the location of any mine pits in this county. I wanted to first do an environmental analysis. And what I found was there was considerable subsidence in the northern branch of, Northern Fork of Paget branch. And that is located right here. I then discovered that there are two mines that you can actually see from the road. And this herbaceous wetland was dewatered, and this branch was dewatered, and both, in my opinion, were the result of those two relatively small mines there. Then this is another shot in the western part of the county. This was a cypress dome. In this case, a rim ditch was put around the wetland. Those are frequently used to supposedly stabilize the water around wetlands to protect them during mining. And in fact, the rim ditches alone, without any mining, can in fact dewater those wetlands. Now, I'm going to just very quickly show you images from subregion F, which is Manatee and Hardy County. They have a Manatee headwater duet acquisition here, which is conservation land. It's 1.5 miles south of this mine right here. It's showing very limited impacts now, but there's another mine proposed here. If that mine goes in, that conservation area will be, in my opinion, completely destroyed. Here's some examples. This is one mile east of the Jameson Track Mine, and this whole wetland has been dewatered. The trees are all dying. They're completely covered with moss. This is a shot where a controlled burn approximately five miles from that mine track completely engulfed all of those oaks and killed them. Now, quickly, Dade and Charlotte and Lee County. This is a photo from Dade County, where they have dewatered the area, and Melaleuca has invaded. This is a solid stand of Melaleuca. Other invasive plants from hydroperiod alterations, such as mining, include basoleum pepper, dog fennel, climbing fern, native grapevines, poison ivy, and parasitic daughter vines, which I showed you in that stormwater pond picture. Then here are cumulative impacts from a very small mine here. And over here, I'm going to show you pictures of this area here. You can see the distance, oops, from, let me back up just a second. This area I'm going to show you photos of is down here. There are two very small mines, one completed here, one in the process. And then I'm going to show you photos here. And they look like this. This is the premature decline of death of pine trees in that stand, quite a distance south of the mines. And then here is an area where a natural spring flowing into that slough has ceased to flow, and then the invasive species from the dewatering is encroaching into that tidal wetlands there. This was a Lee County mine. Here are the wetlands, just like the wetlands here. These are cypress, the wetlands. Here was a private property here. And then I'll show you some shots there. These were shots from 2003, the dead pines coming in shortly after the mine. This is 2007. You can see how the dead pines are spreading. These are their conservation wetlands on the mine site. The trees, cypress trees are starting to fall over. This dog fennel is invading. You've got subsidence in another conservation wetland. These are wetlands two and three. And then, in addition, the trees are dying there. This is property over to the far west of the mines, where the trees are dying. They've had land subsidence here on his property. He had to bring in fill on his property to get in and out of his property. This is Melaleuca that's invading. And then, last but not least, this is an area that didn't have a mine, and this is a clear spring that hasn't been dewatered yet. So in summary, examples of the permanent adverse environmental impacts, which can occur far beyond the mine site boundaries, include approximately 50% loss of aquifer recharge and depletion of the water resources, altered natural hydroperiod, which include water levels in lakes, streams, creeks, wetlands, xeric scrub communities, and other environmentally sensitive areas. And then land subsidence, including sinkholes, premature death and decline of native trees, invasion of alien and nuisance species, destruction of critical wildlife habitat and food sources, and loss of native wildlife. And then in conclusion, I just wanted to show a summary of some of the permanent adequacies. And this is based on my evaluation of mine permits the staff provided to me to look at, to try to help answer the questions that the staff provided. And what I found was that only administrative permit requirements are, approvals are apparently required right now, and that county and other agency approvals or issuance of permits don't evaluate the consistency with the current plan elements, which I think is really the purpose of the county. You know, the other agencies don't do that as their evaluation. That's your purpose, is to evaluate that consistency. And then I found a couple of cases where the staff apparently misinterpreted the consultant's statements about what the impacts to the groundwater would be from these mines. There were also examples of consultants using constant head model conditions, which means that their models could never show impacts to the surrounding water table because of the conditions that they set in the model that they were using. Then there are also set-aside requirements that the county is evaluating in compliance bonds that ignore the off-site impact. So they're only focusing on what may happen on that mine site as opposed to on property to adjacent property owners. And then baseline conditions and environmental monitoring weren't documented in any of the cases that I looked at, and that includes from other agencies. And then finally, the DEP issues, at least for the permits that I reviewed for the county, something that they call generic mine permits, which appear to be cookie-cutter permits with standard conditions that they just simply hand to the perma-tee. Then the district also delays submission of basic data, which is required, in my opinion, for environmental analysis until after they've issued the permit. So basically, they're issuing the permit without even requiring the applicant to submit the data that is necessary for them to evaluate the environmental impacts of these mines. Now, there are mine conditions that require, that are, I believe, are problematic, and they often require no dewatering, or something to that effect. And of course, as we know from that USGS report, and also from the volumetric displacement in mines, that's impossible. It's impossible to have no dewatering. Now, you might have no mechanical dewatering, but it is inevitable that you will have dewatering from a mine that is excavated into the water table. There's also a requirement in some permits to have berms surrounding the mine pits as a buffer. This simply increases the amount of material that you have to mine. Often, there's a requirement for planted buffers. And if you plant a buffer, then that requires irrigation. The buffers oftentimes die or become covered with invasive and alien species. And then the final concern is that although maximum depths may be required in the permit, I have yet to see a permit anywhere under any agency in any of the permits I've reviewed that actually have data submitted documenting what those depths are. So that's not, you know, simply an inadequacy in this county. I haven't seen it anywhere yet. So, you know, you can have permit conditions, but if you don't have something to document those conditions, then that's problematic.
Sidney, are we close?
That's it.
Okay. Attaboy. We were going to have Dr. Bromwell come up, but I have one commissioner up here who has waved me three times. He's got his hand like Little Johnny, and that's Greg. He's got to ask a question, Sidney, so come back up. We're going to let him do it.
I'm sorry.
Get it out of his system. And then on his one question, then we're going to go to Dr. Bromwell. We're going to open this back up in a different fashion. Go ahead.
Do you have a feeling this should be short?
Yes. Go ahead.
Only ask him once.
Say it both ways.
Only ask him once. This is for, two questions I want to ask him. First, Roland, have we not seen an appreciable loss of pines in Indian River County after the 2004 hurricane season?
Yeah, that's a good point. And I, anodokally, certainly we have. I think the hurricanes did a lot of damage, stressed the trees. If it didn't kill them or break them off, it stressed them. And the pine beetle impacts and other things, that's prevalent throughout the county.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And so for Dr. Backus, in Indian River County, and I think you've just looked at apparently stormwater retention, perhaps mines. How do you specifically determine the effect of mining on pine trees in Indian River County? How do you look at those pine trees? I know you've shown us some slides. How did you determine specifically that those pines were the, death were the results of dewatering?
Well, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty easy to evaluate areas that are subjected to hurricane damage. And I think more than hurricane damage, I think that the impact is post-hurricane, when you get the tornadoes that are spinning off from those, you know, during the hurricanes, they're, yeah, and, you know, all, one in the same. But there have been studies, extensive studies, on the resistance and resilience of pine trees to hurricane wind forces, and that includes tornado wind forces. And our native pines have evolved with these natural stressors for hundreds of thousands of years. So they have mechanisms to withstand these types of impacts. What happens is, because they have gone through chronic water stress, they are dying from the top down. Now, the pines are the most difficult to detect the damage. I mean, some of those trees that I showed you, I would have thought were pretty robust until they just simply fell over, and you were able to observe that the entire taproot had rotted off. But what you can tell is in the surrounding pines, you'll see like a limp, the limp needles hanging down. If you're very sensitive to what they look like, when they're healthy, they're very turgid. So what happens is, the damage to those trees occurs for two reasons. One is because below ground, their roots are rotting, and that puts a stress on the tree. And then the tree starts dying from the top down. It actually pulls all of its energy down. So when a wind comes through, when it's in that state, it will just snap the tops right out of them. And then everyone assumes that that's wind damage. But in fact, it's not wind damage. It's damage because the tree has been under chronic stress for years before the hurricanes came through. So without a wind, it'll stand there upright, you know, for some unknown period of time. And as soon as you get a storm come through, all of those trees that are in severe, you know, water stress, the tops will just snap right out of them, or the branches will just snap right off. And that's because the whole, you know, all of the strength of the tree has been pulled down near the base of the tree, which is a survival mechanism.
Have you determined specifically that pine trees in Indian River County have died because of mining?
Yes. They're, Indian River County pine trees, you know, I hate to tell you, they're no different from those species anywhere else.
I understand. I think she said she believes that to be true, Greg.
Yeah, you can actually, if you go through, you can actually see that the clusters of the dead pine trees are either associated with some kind of mine area or well fields. And in Indian River County, I've observed both. And then you get out away from well fields and excavated areas, and the pines are perfectly healthy. So, you know, the question you'd have to ask yourself would be, is the hurricane, you know, indiscriminately coming in and focusing its wind right where a mine pit is? You know, highly unlikely. It is more likely that a tornado spinning off of the hurricane would selectively hit in certain areas and damage, you know, this area and maybe not that area. But a hurricane wind is not going to selectively, you know, affect isolated areas of those pines. Those are almost certainly aligned along a fracture system, where, you know, if you've got USGS to come in and do seismic in that area, almost certainly, they would identify fractures.
I think the reason these question, Sidney, is it's probably the opinion of most people here, that we have got widespread pine damage all across our county in areas that are not pockets. I mean, it's -- I mean, it's pretty scattered. So, but we heard what you said, and we got the question. We'd like to go ahead.
I haven't seen that. I've looked, I've looked, you know, from, I feel like I've got a representative evaluation of the entire county, from northeast, northwest, to southeast, to southwest. And I'm seeing very patchy distributions in the pine beetles. You know, they also come in because the tree is under severe stress.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you all for no more questions right now. Nope. No. We'll do them in a minute. Next up on our agenda is Dr. Bromwell. He is another one of our experts. He's more involved in the industry. He's got his own engineering firm, which he founded in 1972. Dr. Bromwell graduated from Massachusetts Institute of Technology, where he received a degree in chemical engineering and doctor of science in civil engineering and specialization in geotechnical engineering. He started BCI engineers, as I said, in 1972. He's received, been a professor of engineer in nine states. He's worked all over the country, and he has numerous, innumerable peer-reviewed papers as well. Dr. Bromwell, I will go through the rest of this. It's about 16 pages on both of y'all. You're both well-known, so please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I first came involved with mining projects and operations in Florida in 1965. In some audiences, I can say that was before most of you were born, but I don't think that works here.
Thanks.
Been doing it ever since. It's a major part of my professional practice and our firms. We worked in all types of mining in Florida, all over the state, north, south, central. I personally have worked throughout the southeastern United States, all the way up to New England, and as far west as Idaho and New Mexico on mining projects, as far south as Brazil. I wanna talk a little bit about the history of the legal structure as it applies to mining, particularly to environmental regulations, to start with. Then I'd like to show you some pictures of what I see as I travel around to various mining projects in Florida, and my interpretation of those. Then I'd like to show you some real problem areas, which maybe you are not aware of, which do not apply here in Indian River County for some special reasons, including to some degrees, including the geohydrology that you have here, which is very favorable, including the population density that we have here, which is still very favorable, and other factors as well that I'll mention as I go along. And then I'd like to sum up with responding a little bit to some of the questions that Stan and the staff have posed relating to regulating mining in Indian River County. And I'm not going to go into that in great detail, because I think I'll use up most of my time with the presentation, but I'd be glad to answer questions as best I can after that. When I first came to Florida and started working in mining and other projects, it was kind of like the wild, wild southeast. Believe me, after you see the next four slides, you'll realize that's not the case anymore. It's a very regulated industry. Here are the various Florida statutes that have been passed by legislature over the years relating to everything about use of state lands, about conservation, particularly Chapter 373, which is the Water Resources Chapter that most of our current rules and regulations refer back to. Pollutant discharge, all lands that are mined now have to be reclaimed in accordance with state requirements. We have laws regarding land and water management and environmental control. The rules and regulations that came out of those laws that relate to environmental aspects of mining, or some of them on this slide, I've got another slide. You can see it's not, it's not a frivolous exercise. In fact, it seemed like, particularly in the early years, every time somebody had a bright idea of another potential problem, either a law was amended or a new rule or regulation was passed. They're still amended every year. They're still growing and becoming more comprehensive, but it's quite a, it's quite a number of hurdles to get over to get a mining permit. It works. It doesn't work well for some small miners, and I know that they wish they didn't have to go through all these hurdles. And some of them, if they're small enough, can bypass some of it. But nevertheless, in my experience, there aren't very many questions that don't get asked and have to be satisfactorily answered at some point through this, through this whole process. And you can see up here the chapters of the Florida Administrative Code that apply in one way or another to mining. Run the gamut from consumptive uses of water and permitting water use to the environmental resource permits, which are the big thing now. They kind of encompass all of the multiple smaller permits and smaller considerations that had been being made over the years. It's pretty much all wrapped under the umbrella of environmental resource permitting now, which is managed by the Water Management District and by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And in the case of mining, the Water Management Districts, through various agreements, really let the DEP take the lead on the environmental resource permits. They still have the lead on the consumptive use of water and surface and groundwater regulation. Just another whole list of the rules that apply and whose standards have to be met before a mine can be opened. The conditions for issuance of environmental resource permit are listed on this slide, and I apologize, it was a direct copy out of the handbook. And while I'm thinking of that, let me, just to emphasize this, not a frivolous exercise, here's the applicant's handbook for an environmental resource permit. It's about 700 pages.
How many is 700 pages?
About 700 pages. It's daunting, frankly. And sometimes you do feel sorry for the small guys, but certainly the big companies can handle that with their consultants, and they do. And everybody has to handle it in order to get a permit to be able to mine. But the criteria for evaluating those environmental resource permits, the important ones, I think, through our discussion, I've kind of highlighted in yellow here, and those of you who have a monitor right in front of your face, if you've got your reading glasses, which I don't, can probably read those. First, it won't cause adverse water quantity impacts to receiving waters in adjacent lands. It won't cause adverse flooding to onsite or offsite property. It won't cause adverse impacts to existing surface water storage and conveyance capabilities. Won't adversely impact the value of functions provided to fish and wildlife and listed species by wetlands and other surface waters. Won't adversely affect the quality of receiving waters. It won't adversely impact the maintenance of surface or groundwater levels. So frankly, if you feel that mining operation, a particular mining operation, or all mining operations anywhere violate one or more of these, you have a good venue to take it up. The rule's been passed. There can always be a rule challenge. You certainly can go to the Water Management District and to DEP and say, I'd like to see a little bit better proof that you're fulfilling your obligations under this Section 40C-4301 Florida Administrative Code. In addition, after all of that, a professional, either a professional engineer, which I am, or a professional registered geologist, has to sign on the dotted line and seal it, putting his professional reputation on the line, that all components of this surface water management system been built substantially in accordance with the approved plans and specifications. Any significant substantial deviations have to be noted, and these determinations have to be based upon onsite observations under the engineer's direct supervision and any measurements that he feels are necessary. And frankly, I have hundreds of times measured the depth of mine pits and reported that in my completion reports. In addition to the state, once you get finished with the state, there are federal rules and regulations. Generally, these have been delegated to the state, but you still are subject to all the requirements of the Clean Water Act. And that back in 1972 was what brought an end to the wild, wild southeast, as far as wetlands protection, water quality criteria, and pollutant discharge and so forth, and the Mine Safety and Health Act, which is more of an operational consideration, and the Coastal Zone Management Act. So that's another group of hurdles to pass. Okay, limestone mining in South Florida. If you go out to an active mine, this is pretty typical of what you'll see. It's not a particularly pretty site, but it also might be a shopping center under construction. I don't really see that much difference. Excavations are necessary. Lakes, wet detention ponds are built usually for the commercial residential facilities. It involves stripping off top soil, getting down into the ground, dealing with the groundwater. In a mining situation, usually there's not impacts on groundwater in terms of direct de-watering, but there may be in some cases, if the rock is deep enough and the water table's high enough. There are potential environmental issues involved with this kind of operation. I think we all know what they are. There are potential dust problems. There are potential erosion and sedimentation problems. There are potential contaminated soil problems. There's a potential for material to be either carried, dropped, or waterborne or airborne off property. All of those impacts have to be adequately addressed. And I think that everyone in Indian River County, if this kind of operation is going on, has the right to feel that they are being protected by the county, by the state, and that those issues are being adequately addressed. And they can be adequately addressed, in my experience. But after this mining operation has passed this stage, it does have to be reclaimed. And a lot of the reclamation looks like this. These are actual photos from retired mine sites in Florida. They have to be replanted with native species at certain densities. Most places in Florida, once you get them started, they take off pretty well. They have to be protected for minimum periods of time at the state level. They have to be protected for a year. If you wanna make sure that the long-term sustainability of those, of that vegetation is viable, then I think it's certainly within your purview to say that they have to be monitored and reported and continued to be inspected for a longer period of time. There are other volunteer native species that come in. They seem to hardly be able to wait until you get the bulldozers out of the way before they and the birds and other wildlife move right in. There's been some discussion about groundwater fluctuations and what causes these groundwater fluctuations. This also is from a 2000 USGS report on Indian River County, and it shows groundwater fluctuations in response to rainfall through a wet and dry period of the year. And those are some pretty big fluctuations. The blue lines up the top, the blue lines everywhere actually are shallow observation wells. The red ones are deeper ones. The black one is actually a canal that was adjacent to this monitoring site down in the southwestern part of the county, out in the orange groves. But the point is that we're looking at fluctuations here that are plus or minus one or two feet easily in a given well over a period of time. And my experience has been that other things that cause fluctuations in groundwater often just get lost in this noise. The difference between how much rainfall you get and what the surface water runoff is, and when this particular surface water body overflows and it flows out to a natural water course, all that goes on. And it has to go on by the time reclamation is finished in the mining operation. You have to put it back into the natural system. Other factors just seem to get lost in the noise. I would agree that if there wasn't any way to fill that bowl back up, when you excavate all the dirt, you're gonna end up with a hole in the ground, and it's gonna draw water into it. But frankly, my experience in almost all of Florida is there's enough water around that it happens. And it happens quick. Even if it has been de-watered, and in many cases, the ones that I largely deal with, it's not de-watered. It's not de-watered substantially, and if it is, it's also recharged because you can't allow that de-watering to impact your neighbors as far as their water table or the regional water table at all. So, you know, that's all looked at when it's permitted, and there are designs to minimize that happening. I won't say it hasn't happened in the past. I won't say it can't happen now. But if it happens now, someone is violating their permit condition, and someone who should be observing it and picking it up did not pick it up.
Where is Site 2? This data was from Site 2?
Pardon?
This data was from Site 2?
Site 2, yes, sir.
Where is that?
It's out in the orange groves down southwest part of the county, kind of close, I think, to about 88th Avenue.
It's near a mine?
Pardon?
Is it near a mine?
Oh, no.
This is just a natural.
But water control is part of every, basically every operation that goes on in the county because of those water table fluctuations. And because in some parts of the county, at least, the water table basically wants to come to the ground in the wet part of the year, people put in agricultural controls and, or water controls. This is one for an agricultural area where the water needs to be maintained low enough so that they don't damage the crop in the, at certain times of the year. And certainly, that's causing, that's causing de-watering very deliberately. Here's another one, which is a mine reclaimed, has a stormwater pond with no mechanical de-watering, no gravity de-watering going on. And we've designed several systems like this, and people pretty generally are glad to have them in their neighborhood. Well, while I'm on to some bad things, here's a corner of Palm Beach County down on the edge of the Everglades. That's actually the Everglades down the lower left-hand corner. It's a, that particularly is a, what's called a stormwater treatment area. It's an artificial filter marsh, but it adjoins Water Conservation Area 2, or the Loxahatchee National Wildlife Refuge, as it's also known. And this is an area that was former Everglades. Now it's the western part of Wellington. And you can see the extent of the stormwater systems, the drainage systems that occur when you have this kind of, this is actually suburban development. Some of those lots are as big as 10 acres, but still, all of that water has to be managed and controlled. For one thing, you don't want it going off into the Everglades, and it can go off into the Everglades. And in fact, the discharge from some of those stormwater ponds in those different water control districts was finding its way to this stormwater treatment area, which is a massive, tens of thousands of acres of filter marsh built to protect the Everglades. And so, to help prevent that problem, you know, the amount of phosphorus that's allowed to actually go into the Everglades is so miniscule, 20 parts per billion, and you don't get that from normal runoff from suburban or urban areas. So we're in the process with the Water Management District of adding a, oh, can I go back easily on this? I'm sorry, I clicked before I meant to. There we go, there we go. 150-acre filter marsh and stormwater impoundment to store the stormwater in there before laying it feed into STA 1 and provide the clean water for the Everglades. That's a little bit of a digression, but the same thing is happening on various scales with former mined areas down as part of the Everglades Restoration Program. This is another one down in western Broward County, and that's the south end of WCA 2, Water Conservation Area 2, up above there. Right below it, the densely populated area is the city of Weston, which is all on former Everglades. And the extensive, extensive amount of water control and stormwater management and all that has to go on. And it goes on because we're heading towards 14 million people down here, right up against the Everglades and trying to save the Everglades at the same time. I kind of point this out for several reasons that I think are valid ones. One, there is good science involved, and the deterioration that was taking place, at least at the rate it was taking place over the last 30, 40 years, has slowed down tremendously. And a lot of these projects are the reason for it. The good design of stormwater ponds, good use of old mining pits as part of the water cleanup, it all is contributing. So everything's not bad about mining and stormwater management. As long as you're gonna have 14 million people around, you've got to have that, or you won't have any natural environment left. Now, this is not Indian River County, thank goodness. But I see some kind of warning signs up there on the slide. But anyway, you can see excavations, these were primarily put in for the construction of I-95 and the widening of Highway 60. You can see stormwater management all You can see stormwater management all over this western part of the, of the county and water control. And as far as the impact of, of mining, and I know one of the things that the county wants to get away from are these square or rectangular looking lakes. They can be very nice lakes, and I think they should be more aesthetically pleasing myself, and it's not that much trouble, I don't believe. They all have to be built now with nice littoral zones, so people tell me there's plenty of fish out in those, in those lakes. But still, it's quite a big change from, this is 1951. This is a dry part of the year. It's in the same general area. This is actually further west, southwest of Felsmere. I can't get my, there we go, I got it back. This is a fairly dry time of the year, presumably, early April, and this is all water. And that's all water. It's a very interesting aerial photo. You're looking straight down on it, of course, and you can see already the canal and drainage system that's put in back that long ago. And in fact, you can see agriculture taking advantage of these dried-out wetlands moving right in behind it. So, I guess the story that this tells me is that we're never going to get back to this situation in Indian River County or anywhere else in Florida. So, a few hundred acres here and there of open water body, you know, it's, it's miniscule compared to what the county's had, had before. And I personally am not, am not convinced that it's, given the benefits that it has in terms of aesthetics, wildlife, stormwater management, I don't, if there are some negatives, I definitely don't think they outweigh potential positives from this kind of, of activity. And the other thing about it that's special about Indian River County, and maybe you all, everyone already knows it, but it's not the same, I don't think, anywhere else in Florida, to some degree in Brevard County, to some degree in Okeechobee County. But I think, I think you need to realize that over the years, we haven't seen a big deterioration in our water quality, like is down in Palm Beach and Broward County. They have increasing difficulty finding good potable water, enough of it, and there's so much chloride intrusion in the, in the shallow aquifer and coming up even from the, from the deeper aquifer, that that's a real problem. We still don't have, we generally have low saline levels throughout both of our aquifers here in, in Indian River County. And that's, that's largely because we have discharging aquifers. We don't have recharge aquifers that lead to interconnection across these aquifer boundaries, across these different water strata. We have flowing wells, which can be good and can be bad, needs to be considered for sure if you're going to do something like mining. But that Florida aquifer, which is 2,800 feet, more or less thick, stores a huge amount of water, and billions and billions and billions of gallons of it are pouring out into the Atlantic Ocean. So, we, you know, we're not scraping around to find good water in this county like a lot of places, and I don't see mining damaging our water resource either, frankly. So, I think I have a couple more slides. One of the questions that intrigued me was that Stan or staff put in, are there BMPs for this type of mining operation that should be included in the county's regulations? Well, there are. I mean, there's another 693-page manual, chapter six of which is called Stormwater and Erosion and Sediment Control: Best Management Practices for Developing Areas. So, the, the science is out there, the experience is there. It's been going on for a long, for a long time. The county needs to and should take advantage of the knowledge base that's out there, of the agencies that are charged with protecting these valuable natural resources. And in addition to that, and I, and I, and I feel that you have a role to play in all of that, even though the lead is taken by DEP and the Water Management District plays a very important part in that, and in issuing the permits and presumably in monitoring these projects, inspecting them, enforcing their rules and regulations. I think in all of those areas, the county can play a role. I don't know if I were in, in your shoes, or anyone else's in the county government, if I would feel that comfortable just saying that the DEP or, and/or the Water Management District, and/or the EPA is going to take care of everything for us. There are a lot of issues, some of them environmental. And I think on the environmental side, you can expect to rely on them more than on some other things. There are a lot of local issues, we're not going into those today, but certainly on the local issues, I think that the county has every right to write an ordinance the way they want to see the county develop and grow, and the way they want it to be, and the way we all want it to be. I think that those need to be well thought out. They need to be meaningful requirements that are, that are put in, put in there, not just put in there because we think maybe that's going to do some good, and I'm not saying anybody's doing that, but that is kind of a, a criteria that has to, has to be used. If you don't want mining adjacent to natural wetlands, I think you're entitled to, to say that. I don't know what kind of, of burden that puts on various properties around the county that are suitable for mining. You know, you can't just go open the mine anywhere. You have to go where either the rock or the sand, or whatever it is you're looking for is, and it's not everywhere. And that can, that can pose a, a significant problem, and it can be remediated. I don't agree that there isn't a way to protect adjacent wetlands and adjacent property owners. It's done day in and day out. You can find places where it wasn't done in the past. You can probably still find some where it's not adequately being done today, but I think that's where the county needs to step in. I really think that if there's, if you're going to write an ordinance for how mining's going to be regulated in the county, you need to have somebody who's going to be responsible for that, who's going to follow it, who's going to sit in on these pre-application meetings with the other agencies, who's going to let the county's voice be heard, who's going to be out there making his own inspections, or maybe in conjunction with the Water Management District and the DEP. I've had some inspections, believe it or not, with 15 different agencies involved. If one of those is the county, that's fine with me. And they should be in on the, the county should be in on the enforcement end of it too. Write, write the rules the way you want them, make them good rules, supplement the science and the technology and the knowledge base that exists in the other agencies that have primary responsibility for this, and then follow through. If there's any place where many state agencies just are not able to carry the ball far enough is that they don't follow, they don't follow through, and I'll acknowledge that. If it's a good miner and he's got a good engineer working for him, may not be an issue. But otherwise, some bad things could happen.
Dr. Bromel, thank you very much. If I tell you, what we'd like to do is the commissioners, I'm sure, have questions, as do some people in the audience. Dr. Bacchus, if maybe you could come to one mic, and Les, if you'd go over here, if they're both, we can, people can direct them to whomever they feel like at the time. I have one quick question myself, whilst Dr. Bacchus is coming up for you, Les, and that's, in her presentation, and this has been a big issue among everybody here, and I think we'll hear more about it, but in her presentation, she's talking about non-mechanical de-watering, this evaporation and the, the dropping of the water tables. And as an engineer, measurability of the cone, and what would you say to the fact that, what I think her, and she can correct me at this, but her point is, is that when we dig the holes, we do have an impact into pine trees or surrounding property, maybe more adversely than we have taken into account in the past. Is that, you, you're big into reclamation, I know, as an individual, but is that something? How would you address her from the, her standpoint? If we're trying to make rules, we've got to balance between what, the measurability of the cone, and I'm, I'm going to ask her about scientifically how she would measure her impact, but what would you say to that?
Well, I, I actually heard Dr. Bacchus say back in February that the trees show you the impact, that you probably can't measure it, and that's one reason I went back to that USGS publication, and showed that if it's within that noise of plus or minus two feet, then what is it that the mining did that, that caused those damages to the trees? And I'm sure she'll have a response to that, but my personal feeling is, if somebody told me this was going on in New Mexico, I'd be much more inclined to believe it, because it just seems to me that there's so much water here, you can't dig a hole below the water table and wa, and sit there for days waiting for it to fill up. And if you had, if you dug a big enough hole, and even if you have instruments scattered out away from that pond, you're not going to see much of a drawdown at all, in my opinion. As far as I know, it hasn't really been documented that that, that that's going on. There's no doubt there's water being lost to the air, just like there was water being, there's water being lost to the air out of the stick marsh now, but still, we're glad we've got the stick marsh.
Okay. Questions of, before, we all have some. Open it up to the commissioners and.
I'd just like to follow up on, on that statement.
Richard, go ahead.
Have you had done any research on hydrology in the, in the county? I know you have a lot of publications here, but.
Not in Indian River County.
But in general, I mean, overall?
Yes. There's a, there's an institute called the Florida Institute of Phosphate Research, and we've been doing hydrological and geotechnical research for them since 1978, in conjunction with University of Florida.
Your firm?
University of South Florida, yes, our firm, along with other consulting firms and research organizations.
Is this published in, in journals, the results of your studies?
Yes, every, every.
And some of them are listed in, on your CV?
Some of them are in my bibliography, yes. Others, I did not directly participate in, but our firm did. And you can actually go online to, we call it FIPR, F-I-P-R, and every research project that they do has a report that is available, almost all of them online, most of them through the National Technical Information Service in Washington.
Are these peer reviewed, or how do they go through the process?
They're peer reviewed. There's a technical advisory committee. First, there's a staff, professional people that are permanent with the institutes in BARTO. There's a governing board, which is made up of professionals and people in the industry and environmental people. There are technical advisory committees in each, each area of research who review the proposals that come in. Sometimes they'll put out a request for proposals. The research is funded, it's conducted, and the reports come in, they're peer reviewed and published.
Who supports the, where does the funding come in?
From the severance tax on phosphate mining.
Okay, good.
It's an agency of the state.
Right. If you, you're aware of the Miami mining halt, or the proposed?
In the Lake Velt, yes.
Right. What is your views on that? Was the judge?
I'll be, I'll, I'll be frank about it, and they are my views. I'm not, I won't say they're ironclad views, because I haven't been that directly involved with it, but some of my friends have. I'm not sure that permits should have been granted for mining in some of those areas in the first place. It wouldn't be the first time that I've seen the Corps of Engineers not do their job as thoroughly as they should, so that's one aspect of it. I'm not, I'm not positive that the contamination in the South Miami well field from benzene could not have been caused by mining. They certainly did use formulations for blasting at that time that could have transformed some of the petroleum products potentially into benzene. It's a very, very, very transmissive aquifer, like nothing you have up here, like nothing that's in any county between here and, and South Broward County. So, all of those factors are, you know, it may have conspired to produce almost the perfect storm for that part of Dade County. Jury's still out on, well, the jury's not out, the judge has pretty much made his decision.
Right. You, you mentioned the 40C and the dash 4.301 impacts in that chapter. If, if you were going to design an ordinance, and this is kind of a question for both of them, both of you, I was wondering, how, what, how would you measure this? How would you start out in pre, before even the mine is done, what would you do? How would you start measuring the, the impacts that you're going to be having? If we're going to start out clean and fresh here now?
Well, it's, it's a good question, because we actually have two projects that are just going through the ERP process now, and one that's just recently, recently finished. And in all of those cases, there were extensive geohydrological studies made before the permit application was ever made. We studied one of them for at least two years. The two that we're on now, one of them will prob, both of them will be at least a year of installing wells, making borings, making measurements in the ground to detect what seepage is going on, what direction it's going in, what potential off-site facilities could be impacted, modeling those impacts, determining how they could be mitigated if there is an impact. And we do mitigate them. In some cases, we put down, for example, seepage cutoff walls in very pervious strata that go down at 100 feet deep. It's a safety consideration as well as a water quality and water quantity consideration. Sometimes the, the mine has to move further away from a particular facility if they, if there's an indication that impacts could occur. Not that they definitely will occur, but if there's, you know, a probability that they will, then those kind of considerations have to be taken into account. And some of our projects down in South Florida, I mean, we're, we're dealing with, very close to either residential suburban development, parts of the Everglades, critical water restoration projects like the Loxahatchee watershed, which we have several projects involved with. And we try, whenever possible, to turn these projects, if it's a mining project, back into an asset for the region rather than, than something's going to hurt it. We're, we're working on three reservoirs that are actually going to feed, two of which will feed water into the Loxahatchee system.
So, you would do this by putting in wells?
The initial studies and tests, borings and test wells, and then running various tests, yes.
How far out would you go?
Monitoring period would be incre, you're, you're talking about a one to two-year monitoring period.
You said two.
Well, I mean, he, I, I mean, I heard that there was one on one and then two, but I mean, it's.
Well, the one that had two actually had, had some potential problems with it, and it's one where we put a deep slurry cutoff wall around to mitigate that.
I see.
And that did take a couple of years.
So, and what about other environmental impacts? How would you measure those?
Well, it takes, it takes a team of, of trained professionals to look at all aspects of it. You've got multiple disciplines involved. You've got, you've got, you know, wildlife specialists, you've got plant specialists, you've, you've got engineers and geologists and hydrologists all basically working together. A good knowledge base, you know, you're, you're probably not the first project ever in that region, so you can look back at what was done before, what problems have been encountered, how they, how they were addressed. It's a pretty comprehensive look at it, and hopefully you've got the right team and you, you do it right, so you get through the permitting hurdles without, I mean, permitting people like to see you come in and be aware of the problems and have solutions ready to, to propose. If you're not in that boat, then you're going to be going back and forth for a long period of time in some cases, particularly if the agency knows there are potential problems in that area.
Could I ask the same question to Dr. Bacchus?
Could you restate that question?
Well, I just, what kind of monitoring and what would we need to do in the, before we start going in there and digging a mine? What, what do you recommend we do?
I think I should start by having the caveat that I, you know, the disclaimer that the only types of impacts I look at are the environmental impacts. So, I, I think, you know, with respect to the, the monitoring wells that were just referenced, you know, those generally are geared to ensuring that individual wells that might be associated with well fields or private residential wells, that those wells are not impacted through de-watering so that their wells, their pumps burn up, or that the water quality is some, in some way impaired. And, you know, that takes a completely different approach from what my concerns are, which are the environmental impacts. So, and that was another thing that I think I saw when I reviewed the permits that had been issued by the county. It seems that when there were specific statements about groundwater impacts, that, you know, there were those distinctions that, that they were concerned about protecting wells, you know, which are not the same as protecting the environment. So, the first concern I would have is, is, where were those two sites that you mentioned that where, it sounded like you said some baseline data were being collected before the mines were excavated? Where were those?
These are all down in Martin and Western Palm Beach County.
Okay, so those are, are those in an area where they've got existing mines already, or are those in areas where there haven't been any groundwater alterations?
There are no, there are no existing mines immediately adjacent to these. They are in the region.
So, I guess the, you know, the first concern you would have, of course, you need baseline data, and right now, in all the permits I have evaluated, no baseline data have been required by any of the agencies. But assuming that you're going to have baseline data collected, you know, you have to be concerned about whether the baseline data you're collecting has already been influenced by, say, you know, municipal wells that you have in the area, or existing mines that you have in the area, because, you know, these things are not operating in, you know, individually, they're operating as a cumulative impact with whatever else is going on in the area. Now, I'm not, again, I don't address the, the potable water issues from a water quality or quantity standpoint, but I. or quantity standpoint, but I think there was some reference to the fact that Indian River County has plenty of water and they're, you know, not scrimping for water, but my understanding is that both Vero, the city of Vero and the county are both, have new wells now that are no longer using the surficial or tapping the fluoridin and are using RO. Now, that suggests to me that, you know, that you do have a critical water issue with respect to potable water. And my observations around both of those well fields, both the cities and the counties, is that there's extensive environmental impacts associated with both of those well fields. So the environmental impacts, you know, it's not just a consideration for the tree huggers. You know, that's your first red flag waving that your, your potable water situation is in jeopardy.
Sidney, let me interrupt you just a second. Have we always, have we been, have we done drinking potable water out of surficial wells in Indian River County? Or have they always been deep?
You're asking me?
I'm asking our staff. I, I was under the impression we'd only run out of deep wells, and the surficial water was something we were looking at.
Well, you know, I'm not from utilities, I'm not absolutely up on it, but my basic understanding is the cities is more of a shallow well field, the counties are deep RO.
We've always, and the well fields you're referring to are in the county, because I know those are the ones that Bob had, but I was under the impression, Sidney, that we're, it's not something new.
Right.
This is, we're expanding our system, but this is not new, so I'm.
Right. So I guess, okay, so maybe I should clarify. The county's well field site, at least the one that I saw up in the northeastern section, they're putting in a new well now, which I understand is going into.
It's a new well field going up there.
Right.
It does have some.
And the existing extractions from that well field right now, without the new well, already has caused de-watering of the surficial aquifer to the point where it's having environmental impacts. Now, if those have always been fluoridin aquifer wells, you know, that's my point. The point is that there is interconnection, there is an exchange of water that occurs between the deep aquifer zones and the shallow aquifer zones. So, so basically, you know, this goes back to the question of what.
The question he asked is how you monitor this, Sidney.
Right.
For somebody specifically, what would you do? Because that's what he wants to know.
I'm trying to explain to you the complexity of it, that you can't just simply go out and, and put, you know, some monitoring wells around if you're not taking into consideration the fact that there is that exchange of water between the deeper aquifer and the shallow, and that you have to consider the impacts not only of whether there is a mine next door, but where your municipal wells are and what impact those wells will have on the mine side and vice versa.
I didn't think we had the exchange of the surficial water and the, and the deep aquifer because of the way our construction in the, from your presentation before, I thought we were fairly well protected.
No, no. If you are within the extent of the regional fluoridin aquifer system, which is the entire state of Florida, the coastal plain of Georgia, the coastal plain of South Carolina and Alabama, you are having exchange of water from the deep fluoridin aquifer and your surficial aquifer systems. That's a given. And the impact will vary depending on how much you pump from any of those zones. And that means that once you have pumped to a certain extent from that fluoridin aquifer where you're literally pulling the surficial aquifer through those fractures, through those conduits into the lower system, you're de-watering to some extent in some areas the surficial, then at a point, you're going to start pulling up more saline water. You will have exhausted the fresh water in that area and you'll start pulling up more saline water. So, you know, those are the considerations. What I would, in, in direct response to that question, what I would want to do first, and it's what I tried to do initially, is I requested a copy of, of all of the documents from staff that were in each packet for each individual mine that had been permitted. And what I was anticipating was that there would be copies of agency documents, you know, showing how each of the other agencies had evaluated the, the mine. Now, some counties actually do that. They request a copy of every single document that comes into the Water Management District or to DEP, so they'll have that in their file. But what I found is that most often, the monitoring reports, although they'll have all the other documents in the file, they will not have any monitoring reports. And, and what happens is, once that permit's issued and the requirements are there for those monitoring reports, in almost all cases, the monitoring reports don't come in. Not only do they not come into the county, the, the monitoring reports that are acquired by these other agencies don't come into the other agencies. And nobody knows about it until somebody comes in and says, can I see a copy of that monitoring report? And then there's this chain reaction that goes all the way back to, you know, and I think.
That's like an enforceability issue.
Right, exactly, exactly what was happening. So, you know, I think the first step is to request all those documents from the agencies.
That's.
Find out exactly what they're monitoring and how they're monitoring it. And then you can figure out from what they're, they're already doing or not doing, you know, how it needs to be expanded or, or done in more detail, or, you know, that's the first step that.
I guess I was just wondering, you know, in addition to that, is there some other environmental monitoring we should be doing before?
Well, I, I think the most critical thing with respect to the environmental impacts is that there's nothing to tie together hydrologic data or geologic data to how that's going to relate to environmental impacts. In a number of these permits from the county, I would see statements from, you know, the professional engineers stating that, you know, the water levels would be near what they were previously, or, you know, that they would be at this level or that level. But there's nothing to tell you what that number or that level is going to, you know, how that's going to affect the environment. That data is, is not there. So, you know, I think an entirely different approach needs to be used from, from what's already being used to try to tell you that, you know, we're not going to dry up this guy's private well, you know, right next door to the mine. That's two different sets of questions. So I guess that's the first distinction that needs to be made.
Okay. Donna, you had questions?
It was follow-up to something that Lee was saying, and we've lost the train, so it's, wouldn't be appropriate. But I do have a question for either one of you. I'm really confused because you are saying, Dr. Bacus, you gave this list of permit inadequacies. You had a slide of about 20 or so permit inadequacies.
I was letting the staff go do that later, yeah.
And I would like to get a copy of that, and I think we should all have that. But then you are saying that there are many conditions for issuance of permits, and a lot of those conditions say, we won't impact this, we won't impact that. But Dr. Bacus is saying that the proof that is being provided is not credible. For instance, there was a question regarding constant head issue on the models. Now, this is where we're in a bit of a quantum here. We need help with this. You say we don't have the, the permit, the requirements for the permits. You're saying that we're providing proof that, that won't impact, but now there's a question about the credibility of the, the information that we're getting, and we're not, we're not environmentalists. We can't do that ourselves.
Well, I can respond that in the permits I saw from the county, I didn't see any documents from BCI. So BCI may be doing this. BCI may be providing this information, and it may just simply be that the permits that the county has issued, they haven't used BCI, they've used somebody else.
I should have said in the beginning, I'm not working for any mining company in Indian
River County and have it in the past, although my company does represent one of the potential miners.
Yeah, so he may be, he may be telling you that this is what my company does, and they may actually do that, but I'm just letting you know that I review the permits that, that were issued by your county, and that information's not there. Now, there's one important distinction that I think should be made. During his presentation, he referenced the extensive reclamation requirements. And there, there's a big difference between reclamation and restoration. And reclamation is kind of an engineering thing where, you know, we reinstate the contours as much as, you know, as possible to what they were before, and, you know, things like that, that don't necessarily mean they're going to have any influence on the environmental impacts of the mine. So, yes, there are some very extensive reclamation, you know, standards, but they have no relevance whatsoever with respect to the environmental impacts that I've been addressing. So I think, you know, with respect to your question, I think it goes back again to what I suggested originally is, the best place I think for the county to start is to request the documentation from these other agencies that are supposed to be doing, you know, the technical aspects. You need to get all that, all of those documents, and some of those documents, I think your staff will be able to, you know, make some sense out of. Some of it probably will be, you know, beyond their comprehension, but I think what they'll find is there's not much anything there, other than the fact that there may have been some models run. And, you know, models are not data. I mean, models are not necessarily going to tell you what's happening on your site. They're basically plugging in numbers and, and coming up with a prediction based on the numbers and the conditions that are set forward. So if somebody tells a model that it's going to maintain a constant head, which is basically equivalent to a water level under pressure, that's the head, and if they have told the model that that's going to remain constant and it's never going to change, no matter what, no matter how much rainfall you don't get, or how, how deep the, the pit is, that water level's never going to change because that's the condition set in that model, then you're not going to see any, you know, impacts beyond the, the boundaries of, of that mine pit.
Sounds like a traffic flow model, doesn't it?
What's that?
Private.
Okay, hang on.
Well, with regard to that specific issue, that, that apparently, if it required a transient flow model to be run, was a mistake that didn't get picked up somewhere through the process. And there are transient flow models, we use them all the time. You don't necessarily have to assume that something stays constant if there's a reason to expect it's going to change.
Well, they don't call them models for nothing. They're theories. They're just models, they're not theories of what will happen.
I think the hard part here is that in a lot of cases in these regulations, it is there's statements that are made that you will not affect the property owner, adjacent property owner. Well, you know, as a rule, that's a pretty tou, that's a pretty demanding rule.
Pretty broad stroke.
Good, bad, or indifferent, if you affect him, I mean, there's civil action or there's enforcement action. So, I mean, as a rulemaker, if I say don't affect the adjacent property owner, I've made a pretty damn good rule.
Yeah, well, and, and I think that's another.
And that engineer better, if he fails, he's got a problem.
That's another, you know, misunderstanding with respect to the permits that are issued. If you read those, the, like, the Water Management District permits, they will state in there, you know, you cannot de-water. And then they will also state in there that their permit issuance is based on information that is providing, provided by the applicant, and that they are not responsible for any damage that occurs. They, they have a hold, a hold harness clause in there.
There's a disclaimer, right.
That basically says, we're giving you this permit, we're believing what you have said, that you're not going to have any impacts, and if you have any impacts, not our problem.
But, but if you're the landowner and there is impact, there's still, you have, there's consequence.
You have to take action.
The rule has set a certain thing, so, I mean, there's several people besides the St. Johns that can be held liable.
Right.
So.
So basically, it, it results in, you know, private property owners having, to bear the burden of filing suits against, you know, these, these activities that are damaging their property. So that's what it boils down to.
Sidney, do you find in general, what I'm hearing you say is that there is no definitive or comprehensive set of metrics to measure the pre and post-mining activities?
Well, I, I don't think I, I actually, I didn't mean to imply that if, if that's what, what it was taken for.
Well, you said there's nothing to, to put together hydro and geodata.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's nothing really is measuring. You said the, the reports for the after the fact aren't in the office.
Well, the first thing is that I'm not seeing any realistic baseline data being collected before, before the actual.
The trouble with the baseline data being collected also is that you're collecting data on an area that's already degenerated.
Right.
And that's my big problem. They're giving me all these models, and that's what I say, I don't care who you are, it's only a model, and it's a model of an area that's already been degenerated.
Right. So what, I guess, what the, what the response is that, you know, it goes back into those two components. If you're an adjacent property owner and you have a private well there, and you're concerned about whether you'll be able to continue pumping water, water that's drinkable out of your well before that, you know, after that mine goes in, then you probably have, you know, some semblance of, of a possibility of being able to determine that by putting in the type of, of monitoring networks that, that were described.
But the monitoring networks don't, and this is what Dr. Baker, I think, and I are both getting at, the monitoring networks after two years drop offline. And two years, I don't believe is enough to really monitor whether or not real damage is be done, like the trees and the stuff that you showed. And when I go hunting and I see the pit, and downstream of that pit, I see everything dying, that's not theory, that's fact.
That's, yes.
And I need some stronger regulations or something in, in place to make whomever I have to hold responsibility for that.
Well, yes, and I, I think that's the bottom line. And my recommendation is that you step back from looking at the piecemeal mine by mine by mine approach. Pull in an agency like the US Geological Survey.
Couldn't have said a better thing.
And get them, you know, that's their whole purpose. They're, you know, they're an unbiased scientific organization designed to do exactly this. They can go in, they can do an assessment of what the conditions are right now, you know, and then, you know, they're in a position to at least.
We need somebody in a position to take definitive legal action against that. That's the problem. That's one of the big problems. There's nobody here, no procedure there to hold somebody's feet to the fire.
Well, actually, there is one, there's one other procedure, and in these cases, depending on, you know, the individual mines involved, they may or may not be pulled in, but the Army Corps of Engineers is required.
We don't want to go there.
Is, is required by federal law, anytime they are going to issue a permit, they are required to do a cumulative impacts analysis. And so ideally, you know, if you had a.
They have a model of fits or profile they're waiting to fill too.
Yeah.
But one of the things I really didn't like at LUSP, it was a few hundred acres here and a few hundred acres there. Who was it at a few million dollars here and a few billion dollars there? It adds up. And that's why South Florida is the way it is now, because they went along with that attitude about, oh, it's only a few more acres here and it's a few, well, Donna, we're at the part where we need to stop this now and find out what's going on, put some well-defined metrics in place to measure, and then also, after the fact, to have somebody that can put the thumb down on it.
Then in that case, I've heard one thing said, that is, that we should get the hydraulic report. If you're looking at, we should, that's a, a strong recommendation.
Yes.
And USGS is the agency that, that does that.
Tell me your thresholds. I mean, if, if it's an imperfect world and the water's going to go up and down and whatever, there's got to be some measurable thresholds. There's an engineering cone that goes out based on the size and.
The drawdown cone.
The drawdown. Now, there is a question is, from what you're saying, is that whether the cone is measurable, accurately measured, so that it affects just that area or not.
Whether it's local or regional.
But I still think we have to deal with thresholds, because, I mean, things have been changed, whether we like it or not.
Well, there is no cone. So I think, you know, and I, and I realize that that's the, the terminology that is regularly used, you know, in the agencies and also, you know, outside the agencies, but a cone, this is a cone. And there is no cone. And the reason there is no cone is because the impacts, if you look, if you go back to like Hobart County Park, Hobart, where they did those series of mineral mines, mineral sand mines years ago, you don't see a cone of damage around those wells. What you see is a very elongated linear.
There's my girl. See, that's what I've been telling people.
That's exactly right. And so, you know, you, you may be.
Downstream of where you broke the aquifer. Downstream of where you broke the aquifer form.
You may be right next to Hobart Mine on either side, and you may be getting no impacts from Hobart Mine, but you may go a mile north or south of the Hobart Mines, that cluster of mines, and you have devastating impacts.
Okay, hang on just a second. Les, you, you, as an engineer, if we talk about cones and the cones are equally spread, and what we're hearing now is it's elongated, is that not measurable?
I, I think what we're talking about is up in, up in a recharge, an area rather than a discharge area, where you can get sinkholes formed from changes in water level, and, and things will follow lineaments, and that's, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that's not Indian River County. That's one of the things I was saying, well, you're fortunate to be here in Indian River County. You don't, you don't have big recharge zones into, into the aquifer like you have in central and nor, in North Florida. The particular case that she was showing is, is up in a, in a, in a, basically an old karst area, where lineaments occur, and it happens. I don't think it happens here.
Well, in, in response to, I think what you were asking, how to go about figuring out where it's happening, I think the best approach is, you know, once you get a big picture of what's existing right now with your hydrologic conditions-
Kind of drive a stick and a gruel to measure.
From USGS, go in and do, you know, the backdoor approach, where you know you already have impacts from these certain activities, whether they're the, some type of excavations ranging from things as small as stormwater pits to larger mines and wellfields, and go in and, and, you know, USGS is capable of doing seismic. They can come in and actually figure out what's going on below the surface in those areas where you have the impacts. And then you would either, in areas where there are proposed mines, you would either have to do that extensive geophysical work, which, you know, certainly that can be done. I mean, that was exactly-
What kind of timeframes would that be? What kind of timeframe would that study be? Three to five years, or?
Oh, I would say you could probably do it in, in much less than that. USGS, you know, may be able to pump out a report in three years if, you know, they had the right incentive.
If you do use USGF, if you use USGA, G, GS, excuse me, if you use USGS, is that, can you, you can't do it in small areas, I mean, that needs to be the county.
Well, you know-
I mean, you're not talking about one mining spot, you're talking about the county.
What they would need to do is come in and actually evaluate the, the water resources for the county, and give you a picture of what's going on.
I guess I'm a bit confused, because I thought we had, in this county, I really believe we had a 200 or 300 feet, we have what we call that, I see it in the report here, the Hawthorne Foundation-
Yeah.
-which did not have a lot of these cracks, that we were-
Hawthorne Foundation is riddled-
There's a 1988 hydrogeology report by the USGS, and they report that that aquifer is, that confining layer, 200 to 300 feet of Hawthorne is as tight as anything you'll find, just about anywhere.
Right. That's why I thought we were, I won't say unique, but we were different than some other areas.
I can assure you that if you have pond cypress in your county, which you do all over the place, you have relic sinkholes all over the place.
Okay, but then from our standpoint, if we stay away from those, aren't we staying out of the way from that area?
You're certainly helping, yeah.
And that's-
Well, that, the, the large mine that is proposed right now, right next to your, the Sexton Ranch Conservation Area that you guys, I understand, spent a large amount of money to purchase and preserve, that mine is proposed right next to there, and there are cypress wetlands all over that area.
It will be cool.
So, you know, I haven't seen any areas of the county that didn't have depressional wetlands associated with them somewhere, or system-
So there's no distance we can dig near one of those wetlands that doesn't have any effect?
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, you know, you would have to know, you know-
That's another one of those thresholds that I'm talking about.
Right. And, and there is a way to find out. I mean, you can do geophysical analysis and identify where the fractures are, where the relic sinkholes are, but I can guarantee you, the Hawthorne Layer is riddled, riddled with discontinuities.
That's incorrect. That's not true in this county. It's totally incorrect.
The reason I said it, Sidney, is I thought you said the opposite of that in your last report at the AG meeting. That's why, but you said there were, there was indentations, but I didn't think you said, used terms like riddled and all. That's why I was-
No, I didn't say riddled, but I'm telling you, if you have pond cypress anywhere in the vicinity, you have relic sinkholes that are connecting to the underlying aquifer through-
That's not correct either.
Through the Hawthorne Layer.
There are two geohydrological reports, one 1958 by the Florida Geological Survey, one 1988 by the USGS. I think your staff is aware of those. Some of the questions and their comments indicated to me that someone had been referring to those. There really wasn't much change over that 30-year period. Maybe it should be updated, but I can tell you, sinkholes haven't formed in the last 25 years. And they weren't reported in either one of those.
Well, to sit here and tell me that that layer is not, is solid and has no fractures in it, I think is unrealistic.
Well, you know-
It's 300 feet thick.
You're, you're not-
It's, it's very dense clay and rock.
I'm an engineer myself. I understand that.
Read the USGS. I suggest everyone do that before we continue this.
You're less likely to, to experience sinkholes here, because to my knowledge, there is no massive water withdrawals from the underlying aquifer system. So, you know, that's when you start getting sinkholes forming, is when you're withdrawing hundreds of millions of gallons of water a day, you know, from the Florida aquifer system.
Well, this area is unique, because we have 33% of the county is in public hands, and a heck of a lot of that, a huge percentage of that is in the Water District, Management District ownership.
Let's, if you've got any more specific questions, because we need to go, we need to go into the public.
I need to ask staff and you guys, too. I've never come up, I had lunch yesterday with a staff member of St. John's, just for this purpose. What is the permitting process? Where does it start? I want to do a mine. Do I go to you first to get the permit and then work my way up to state and federal, or do I start at federal and come down? And let me tell you something that, that was at the meeting. I was told by this member, a longstanding member of this agency, that if we don't give those people the permit, our, our refusal to give them a permit is a trump over state. Tell me that, is that, is that true? I hear Bob shaking his head.
I'll, I'll give a start. First of all, there are-
I should say, "I see." Bob shaking his head, didn't hear.
There are a lot of agencies involved, including the local government, involved in, in mining situations, and I think what a lot of the permitting, the environmental permitting agencies' perspective is, if for zoning reasons or compatibility reasons, a mining operation is not going to be approved in a particular location, why bother going through the science part of it? Why bother going through the environmental permitting part of it? So I think, I mean, and that's, that's why it's not unusual for someone, an applicant, to start on all three levels, but to concentrate on the local level first.
Okay.
But a project engineer and design team and specialists have to be aware of all the federal, the state, Water Management District, and the local requirements. They've got, they've got to meet all those requirements. And so they hit a brick wall in any one of those agencies, it's still a brick wall. And so they've got to be mindful of all those requirements when they're starting out, and they're probably working through all those regulations.
Pretty thorough effort.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay, thank you, George. I'm sorry.
George, okay.
Great.
I, I think that with the expertise that we have on staff and, and with consultants, and we have a lot of people in this county that know a lot about water, that are out in our waters right now. So I think that rules and regulations that are going to be developed are going to probably be adequate, be some contention, but they'll probably end up being adequate and fair. My question is, and my biggest concern about this, is after those rules and regulations are developed, have you seen good models, or good districts, or good counties in the South that have a tight and adequate method of compliance and enforcement? That's my concern. You can, we can have all of the, I think that's why we're here now, is because of lack of enforcement and non-compliance. So have you seen things that you, you can suggest to us that we can read to see a good model for that enforcement?
Yes, some of, some of the larger counties in particular have, I guess they've kind of been pushed into this, but they, they basically even have delegation from DEP to handle a lot of the enforcement. That's true in Hillsborough County, it's true in Palm Beach County. I don't know a comparable-sized county to Indian River that has that kind of delegation, or has that, that large of an environmental department within the county, but I think, I think it's a model, and I would encourage the county to, to follow it, to, you know, to the degree that you, that you can. I think you need a qualified county person overlooking environmental issues like this in the, in the county, and responsible for inspections and enforcement, and keeping up with the reports, and making sure the reports are filed.
Can one person do that in Indian River County?
I think probably so, at least to start with, giving some help, him or her. I, I think some of, some of the counties that don't have their own department have one person principally responsible for this. It's a full-time job.
Well, I would agree that, that I think probably the best place to do it is at the county. You know, you, you are the ones that really are going to be at a loss for your resources if enforcement doesn't happen, so, you know, that would be really good to strive for delegated enforcement.
Anybody else got, have any maybe specific questions? I, I'm still looking, and you all can be thinking that, you know, we, I've heard the hydrologic report's a good idea, and if we're, especially if we're going to do this in the county, you know, the more information that we have to review to keep ourselves comfortable with the situation, it's a good thing. I'm still waiting on thresholds. I don't, you know, we have thresholds built into our rules now, where we, adjacents, distances, et cetera. I don't want to get specific now, but if there are some things that we can measure, we need to be looking and thinking about that.
The Water Management District has those in their, in their rules, and, you know, I think you first look at those and see if they seem adequate. I'm sure you can make it tighter if you have a justification for doing that. Many jurisdictions, they don't allow more than a one-foot drawdown at your, at your property line. That may be-
That's why we're trying to get an arms around this environmental impact. If there's a way to measure that, and I think that, I think it's probably the most difficult, that longer-term impact, but the reality is, is that whether we do mines in part of this county, in certain parts of the county, I don't think we're going to stop mining. So if you want to, if you're going to make this impact, we've got to have some thresholds to work in that are reasonable and successful, but we're not going, I don't believe we're going to stop, and that's why I keep pushing that.
You're going to have to, Mr. Chairman, you're going to have to define neighbors, neighborhoods, if you will, that encompass a, a larger area, so that everybody, so that everybody has an action against the overall situation.
Right.
What about the subsistence of the soil? You mentioned that as an important indicator, in certain areas, anyway. Is there something else besides de-watering that could, could cause that to happen?
I didn't hear the first part.
The subsistence of the soils around the trees, use that as an indicator of a problem?
Not really, because the way that works is the, the hydro soils, I mean, there, there are instances where you may not have hydro soils, you may only have sand. And so in those areas, you will not be able to detect any change in the surface, because there won't be a loss from the surface. Now, you can still have subsidence occurring below the surface, you know, of substance not, that are not organic soils. You could have, like, collapse of rock formations and things like that underneath, even very deep down, like particularly in those relic sinkhole wetlands. But in the subsidence photograph that I showed, that was simply organic sediment that had disappeared.
I see that.
And that is solely the response of an altered hydro period. And I think George asked me a question in the last time about, I believe it was George, if I'm not mistaken, whether the Water Management District alterations of the water levels in that area-
Right, what that may have.
And I think now I can answer that question more specifically, because at the time, I had not looked at what they were doing with manipulations of the water levels there. But in fact, what they're doing is they're actually stacking water-
Right.
-or increasing water levels. So now I'm able to determine that, you know, I, I, when they say reservoir, I can't tell whether they mean an excavated mine pit, or whether they mean, you know, altered water levels from, say, weirs or dams or something like that. But I did go out and do an extensive evaluation of that whole area, and I talked to a number of people who had long-term knowledge of what the water levels are doing. And what they are doing not only would, could not have caused that subsidence, it would have actually ameliorated the impacts of that, those water level drawdowns. So that subsidence out there could only be attributed to groundwater alterations only. And what happens is, when you de-water those organic soils, they are anaerobic, which means they're oxygen poor. Once they're de-watered, then they're aerobic, there are microbes that get in there and start making the soil disappear. It, it, you know, disappears through microbial and, and biological means.
So, so it's an, it's, it's an observable feature?
It's observable.
That was the question, right? And I don't, I appreciate it, Sidney, but we got to move on. I got the answer, I think. Okay. Any more questions before we open the public hearing? I have, I have one question, but it's to the lady to my left, because she hadn't had any lunch. Do you want 10 minutes so you can beat the cafeteria before 3:30?
I'm fine.
She's going to live, so we'll open the public hearing without a recess.
He gives me three minutes.
Power snacks?
One power snack. Yes, Bob. We're going to move right to left, and Peter, if you'd had your hand up first, you'd have made it, because you'd have been to far right, but-
What does that mean, to far right?
Bob, you, Bob, you may have, you may have noticed that, that we're trying to get specific, I, I know that it kills you all on the doctorate level, that when we ask questions, we want specific answers without the, with kind of, we want the Cliff Notes version, so I, I'll warn you. Go ahead.
Okay. For the record, my name is Bob Adair. I'm chairman of the Agriculture Advisory Committee. First of all, I'd like to compliment staff on getting two excellent presenters equipped with two really good presentations. Bit my tongue a couple times. I, I think on your issue of monitoring, I, I think George mentioned it correctly, the idea of doing a, a hydrological study of our county is, is due now. At the Agriculture Advisory Committee meeting last February, Dr. Lewis Murray from the USGS sort of offered the fact that, that they would be interested in doing that. He then has followed through by sending a letter and a copy of a hydrology report that the USGS just finished for Pope County, and said that a similar such study could occur in Indian River County. The AG Advisory Committee made such a recommendation to the county commissioners, and that letter has been sent to their attention by the Agriculture Advisory Committee. It would really help the cause for the P and Z to reinforce that recommendation. I think based on what you've heard today, that would happen. The last report was done in 1988, and it's an excellent report. It was published by Shiner Loflin of the USGS Society, Survey, and Dr. David Toth of St. John's, he's an excellent hydrologist. In that report, I think it's sort of interesting to clear up something that was discussed in terms of the, they call it the confining layer, but it's actually a semi-confining layer. Says mill reports that small faults along Florida's east coast have several overall effects of thinning the Florida aquifer on the up-throw side of the fault. They, they talk about these faults being in here, that this, one of several faults is reported presently in Indian River County, was confined on the evidence of geophysical and drillers' logs collected from the study. Furthermore, they state that most of the county is in the discharge area of the Florida aquifer system. Their natural discharge is largely by way of upward leaks, or leakage, through the intermediate confining unit, and probably some small amounts of discharge from the subcrop area beneath the Atlantic Ocean. Okay, so there, there is some transmissibility. I think regarding the enforceability issue, we had a presentation at a Soil and Water Conservation District meeting two months ago, where Rich Berkloo with St. John's Water Management District stated that they have two inspectors that are dedicated to monitoring- Management District stated that they have two inspectors that are dedicated to monitoring mining and the wells there. And in that meeting...
Bob, I should have told Greg this, and I'll tell you, I really want to stay focused environmentally. We've got a whole nother workshop on enforcement. Once we get all these, then we're going to move to enforcement.
Okay, well...
I'd rather not get into it much today.
Okay, in the presentation, it was stated that the problem was lack of monitoring. I'm augmenting that statement. I'm telling you, that's true. Rich Berkloo acknowledged that. One of the members acknowledged that they'd never seen any monitoring done in existing mines here.
Okay, the lack of mon, so your suggestion is, is that we have more monitoring?
I'm saying that the St. John's River is overwhelmed, the Water Management District is overwhelmed trying to do the monitoring. In fact, a lot of the mines go unmonitored by their own statements. And the other thing is, is that we were talking about how do we look downwards to see where this cone of influence is, for lack of a better term. I think, Sidney, Dr. Bockus and her publications mention the use of infrared analysis, so you might want to look upwards and use remote sensing that we were talking about using for greening disease. We could also do that in our environmental audit to look at spectral changes with infrared and hyperspectral analysis to look at 2008 versus 2010. Some of those color infrared photographs are available now, so they're benchmarked, they just haven't been analyzed.
You're talking about county-wide, then?
Absolutely. And this hydrological report is not cheap. That's why I think we're going to need your support. The cost, they had three agencies share the cost, three different water management districts, USGS and Pope County, and the bottom line for an extensive study, and it was over a two-and-a-half, three-and-a-half-year period, was $740,000. The last thing I'd like to say is that...
Not a problem, the Ag Committee can get it, right?
Well, I mean, we're talking about environmental damage.
I understand.
I would like to add the agricultural...
Less than the cost of one well, isn't it?
Yeah.
For a well field.
Go ahead.
Half the cost.
Good point.
I'd also like to add, besides the environmental impact, I think we want to make sure that we don't have any agricultural impact in light of the county's onslaught with some of the different citrus diseases that are going on. And then lastly, I just want to point out that our use of groundwater in 1984, largely from the aquifer, Floridian aquifer, was around 46.73 million gallons per day. In 2005, that number's around 71.6. Population has increased over that 20-year period 71 percent. I think we owe it to ourselves to be very cautious of how we treat our water supply, and we're banking on the Floridian aquifer almost entirely, and we want to make sure we protect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Peter?
It's a little different being on this side of the dais there. Peter O'Brien, Indian River County Commissioner, wanted to reiterate on the water quality permitting in your backup as a copy of a permit from St. John's with the North Cypress Reserve. The permit was issued on October 9th of '07. Water level monitoring does not need to be initiated until April 9th of 2008, so...
That's per St. John's.
That's per St. John's. So they're not even requiring monitoring until after the excavation has started, so we're really not getting pre-excavation monitoring. When Dr. Murray was here before the Ag Committee, he recommended a full one-year water level monitoring prior, pre-excavation. When we talked to the Dickerson folks, I think they said they had to do a two-year pre-excavation water level monitoring. And then, George, to answer your question, how do we measure the difference? Dr. Cromwell is right, the natural fluctuation is pretty good, and how their permit was is they were allowed a seven, I believe they said 17 percent variance based upon that two-year average monitoring, so...
If they got outside that, then it was a cause and effect.
Then they would have to stop or rectify. Now, we can work on that if an applicant...
Can I ask Dr. Cromwell a question while you're up here, Les? This is something that, you know, you mentioned earlier with Richard, this pre-monitoring, which has been discussed by all of us prior to today. And is this something in other places, I mean, do you see these monitoring wells going in a year in advance before you can begin a mine?
Yes.
And I know that we haven't had a lot of that because most of our mining was done originally, most of what we faced was along the ridge and/or there were small residential mines that were, or built at golf courses. And let me tell you, no golfer wanted to wait a year, so we had, we moved ahead. So this, we're kind of moving into a different era for a landowner if you have to do this a year in advance. But if that's not unusual, especially in more and more commercial mines, then that's something that we probably need to be looking at. But that's not unusual?
It's not unusual.
At all?
No. And I guess you could build a little flexibility in there. If the applicant only wants to do one-year pre-monitoring, then they may only get a 10 percent variance.
Is there a size differential in the one or two years? Would there be, if you're going to do, most of what we've seen are in, what, 20 acre, 10 or 20 acre segments, right, Stan?
Well, and there I'd say, you know, I was very impressed with Dr. Murray, and I would say that's something we turn it over to the USGS to, if a landowner says, okay, I think I want to do a mine here, then they should go to USGS, say, okay, I need a monitoring program that'll make St. John's DEP and the county happy, let USGS determine where the wells go, and let them take the entire monitoring responsibility over because they are neutral...
Would that be, you're an engineering company firm, is that reasonable?
I'm sorry?
He said to turn this over to USGS and let them outline the programs, the monitoring, and tell you what...
Probably not. What happens in some places, in some jurisdictions, if the US has done a recent study and a thorough study and they're good long-term records, then the applicant can play off of that, if you will. In other words, they might be able to monitor for a short, shorter period of time. If water quality, say, chlorides are an issue, they might be able to do a more rapid chloride monitoring program around their property to show that it is or is not a problem. So there are various things to speak of.
Would USGS know that?
Pardon?
Would USGS know that so that they would, they could alter their plan?
Yes, if the USGS has done a county geohydrological study, they include water quality, and particularly for coastal counties, they'll include pretty detailed chloride monitoring. In Indian River County, the 2000 report also had the nitrates, you know, all through the orange groves and everything.
And that may be fine for that type of water quality. If we want to look at the shallow water level changes and the impacts to environment, I think we need a site-specific...
That's what I was...
...design by USGS. We take out any bias as far as consultants and such. Little information, there was a meeting down in Palm Beach on mining. The USGS had a proposal for the Everglades agricultural area. I'm not sure the total acreage, but they were going to do a resource map. And the resource map, when I identify potential areas of aggregate or material, is not a reserve map, so it doesn't tell you how much they can pull. It just says these are areas where there is material, and they could do that for a price of $600,000, so just for some general reference numbers.
Not a problem, you got the checkbook, right?
Yeah.
You're in the checkbook.
Yeah, if you all decide that's what we need to do, then, you know...
Is the six plus the 750, I mean, is that, or is that included in the initials?
I don't honestly know, we can find out. And I think we should bring USGS in and get those numbers from them, but I think they're a great resource that we should tap in. And then finally, just a couple of editorial comments real quick. Commissioner Fletcher, I agree with your comments, just, we can't look back at 1951 and say, yeah, there's a lot of water near Felsmere, and say a couple hundred acres here and there don't matter. It does matter. We got about 15 million more people here, we got drinking water problems. Every acre is critical in my mind, so I think we need to do that. I also, for all of us that went and toured the Dickerson Mine, and then to see a slide up there that says, okay, limestone mine is kind of just like a shopping mall or residential development, no. Okay? That is ludicrous to say a limestone mine, a gaping giant chest wound hole in the ground, is the same as a residential development or a shopping center. They are not, okay? We all saw that. And finally, there's a lot of talk about reliance on the state for water quality protection. Let me just give you two facts about that. Tallahassee has the highest ratio of paid lobbyists to elected officials than any state in the nation. Fact two is, there is no sunshine in Tallahassee. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Very convenient of them, they voted themselves out of the sunshine.
Let's see, behind Lex, to the back of the room and working forward.
Do you feel like a lottery winner?
Imagine that. Harvey Wheeler's the basket.
This, I'd like to thank both the presenters as well, they've done a very good job. And first off, without getting deep into it, I do support the county going ahead and setting up some enforcement.
We'll talk about enforcement later.
I know, I'm dropping that now.
Good. Next.
Okay. Benzene was brought up, and it was quickly dropped a little while ago. I actually took the liberty to read the court case with the aquifer, the stain aquifer situation. And means and methods, if it's going to be blasting, more than likely, we're going to end up with a benzene residual one way or another.
I don't think anybody's identified anything in this county that's that type of material. That, I'll ask the staff, have we ever thought we had anything that we'd have to blast?
We've been through this.
Just to save you some time, I don't like...
You know, I wanted to wait till the nuisance workshop to say no blasting, but we can say it now, too.
Okay, so...
Certainly a possibility.
Huh?
What'd you say?
Did you say?
Staff's research indicates that it won't need blasting for any materials that are mined in this area, so I would anticipate a regulation of no blasting when this is all...
I suspect.
Okay, would chemical fracturing be another alternative?
That's also no blasting.
Is that, I don't know, as an engineer, what do you use chemical?
Not in Florida. Not these depths.
Oh, too much.
That's a no?
No.
Okay, that's refreshing, a no, thank you. That's a very bad residual left as well. Okay, the spirit of saving time here, I'll jump over across a few things. I did look at the, what I'm calling the conceptual plans of this proposed wild turkey mining facility, and I gave them what I call my plan review. I'm just going to hit a couple red flags and leave. I see that there's no...
As long as it's environmental issues, it's okay.
It's all environmental issues.
We'd rather not be site-specific if you can.
Okay, that's fine. Typically, I see mining operations where there's no aquatic bench, in other words, sheer cliffs going down. An aquatic bench being three- or four-foot subsurface going out and then down to whatever grade the thing is. That's important for environmental, fish, aquatic life.
We have, we have got this literal, they've got, the county has a pretty good literal design in regard to that, although I'm going to bring up fishing game in a little while.
Okay, litorial zone is more than just for fish, a healthy fishery, it's also to help clean water. We all know aquatic plants clean water very well.
So you want us to be careful we don't have cliff sides? You want to build in the shapes and/or the slope necessary for healthy water and fishing and, as a rule, if we don't have it, that's something, we're trying to look toward rules eventually, that's what you're requesting?
Right, riparian zone and litorial zone, healthy areas that cleans water, we all know that. The outfall, nonspecific. The outfall going into the lateral sea or the sublateral sea with no finishing pond, that's a kind of a questionable design, in my professional opinion, anyway, and I hope that that's looked at.
Don't we have, don't, haven't we required mines to maintain the water on the, they have to maintain it on their own property now? They're not allowed to outfall? Or is that one of the recommendations further on that I read?
That was actually one of the potential regulations. At this time, for mining operations in particular, there's no local requirement that would prohibit discharge if it meets water quality standards, but that is, a no-discharge regulation, they do have them in some other places, and it may be something that this county wants to have.
As I interpret what you said, you're recommending a no-discharge?
I'm recommending that a finishing pond, a shallow retention area where the outflow of these proposed mining pit lakes goes into to clean the water up even more in case there is pollutants, and then discharge into the lateral sea, which goes into the south prong.
Would you be, would you think if we had a rule that said no discharge, we'd be better off than even that?
Yes, sir, absolutely, if it's possible.
I thought I heard you recommend that, I just...
It's very good.
Thank you for your time.
Commissioners, if I could respond to that, there is a problem with requiring no discharge that has been done in other counties, and the problem is that water historically sheet flows across from one site to another site, and that sheet flow or surface discharge, you know, which often is referred to as stormwater, can be critical in maintaining natural areas off-site. So if you require no discharge from a mine site...
We could block the flow of...
And, that's right, and could in fact cause significant adverse environmental impacts off-site.
Good point.
Does our landscaping, our new landscaping ordinance cover mines, too?
Parts of it would.
For the lateral zone?
Yes, it would, the lake-shaped lateral zone and the tree shoreline plantings, all would...
We work, that's been kind of addressed already. Yes, sir. Not you, Lex, behind you, I'm still coming forward, you know. The good news about being in the front of the church, Lex...
You're taking the best from us, Lex.
Next time, you'll sit in the back of the church, Lex.
My name is Russell Herman, I reside at 586 Redwood Court, Sebastian. Members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, first of all, I'd like to thank the two representatives that spoke today for their informative presentation. I'm speaking today as the representative of the Indian River Neighbor Association. Our concerns are for what impacts the Culkin Rock Mines and other mines may have on our fragile environment. The project is adjacent to the lateral sea canal, which is under the jurisdiction of the Sebastian River Water Control District. This canal directly drains into the south prong of the St. Sebastian River. We are worried about the effects of disturbing this site, which was previously an agricultural operation for 45 years.
You understand, sir, we're not talking specific sites today. This is a general workshop.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, and we were, we were talking about retaining discharge on the property, which would eliminate what you're talking about.
Okay.
As one of the recommendations for rules, now that's, I mean, if you have a recommendation and you'd like the water to stay on the site, then in general terms, we'd like to stay on the site, would cover it, okay?
The disturbance of the water table in shallow aquifer may also leach nutrients and other pollutants on or brought to the site. The process of canals means that areas that historically were not connected to the St. Sebastian River now are, and we're concerned about potential impact on the river. The St. Sebastian River contains some of the most diverse fish habitats in the United States. The river is home to eight species of fish commonly found nowhere on earth, which include the species of special concern, the opossum pipefish.
The what?
The current moratorium has put into place a time to focus and see what our system falls short in safeguarding our environment and its residents. Although there are regulatory agencies that oversee for us on a state and federal level, we would be well within our rights to set county guidelines to act as a frontline protection for our citizens and our environment. The Indian River Neighbor Association thanks you for your attention to this important matter.
Just a second, sir, I hate to put you on the spot, but does you or the Indian River Neighbor Association have a specific guideline you'd like to see us set? Because we're in the process of trying to work on guidelines today. They not won't be specific, but if you got some, I heard no discharge, keep it out of the canals, to keep it out of the river, which I think is admirable. Anything else?
No, I think the others would be handled in a different workshop.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Les, I think you're up, buddy. Come on. Yeah, come on, go ahead and get up.
I appreciate what you're doing, and I think you can clearly see that you've got a hydroecologist and a hydroengineer.
Absolutely.
And what you need here is probably a hydrogeologist. We just happen to have a hometown boy that works for the Florida Hydrological Service here in Florida, and that's my son. He made the presentation for Palm Beach County's cost estimates, and I think what you really need to do is go back to them or to USGS to work together and try to come up with an underground structure around the mining issues, ask them... an underground structure around the mining issues, ask them for advice as to what you're looking for in terms of rules and regulations, and you probably come out with a report that will be not only good for what you're dealing with here, but also for the county with an alternative water supply, if you incorporate that in the same report.
The surface.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lex.
Why didn't you bring your son, Lex?
You can't afford to bring him home anymore. David?
Commissioner, David Gunner, chairman of the Soil and Water Conservation District, and I'm also wearing the hat for the superintendent of the Indian River Farms Water Control District. The Soil and Water Conservation District is the agency that has pushed for the zero-discharge mines, and that's primarily due to my observation in the Water Control District of the discharge from mine sites, be they subdivision retention ponds, actual mining operations. They invariably never meet the 29 NTUs that are required for discharge into my system, and there's no enforcement. So the, and in a Water Control District, you don't have the sheet flow issues, you know, that you've already got a drain system. Now, if you're going to have a mine operation outside of a Water Control District, you would definitely need to look at the ERP, Environmental Resource Permit, see.
Which would be almost, that'd be almost out west of Paget Creek. I mean, everything, everything east of St. John's Water Management Area.
Right.
Is pretty well drainage, some form of drainage in this, in our county.
There's an artificial drainage system in place on most of that property, and if it has that, you wouldn't need to worry about the sheet flow issues that would affect hydrated wetlands and so on and so forth.
It's already diverted.
Right, the water's already diverted, but, and if you do have some isolated wetlands on any site, you know, they would have to remain hydrated through your mining operation. And we had one active zero-discharge mine during Francis and Gene, and they had zero-discharge off-site, kept all of their stormwater on-site, and then eventually percolated out. Now, they couldn't do any mining, but there wasn't a whole lot of need fulfilled after the hurricanes, anyway. They were looking for places to pile the bridge, so.
Which mine was that?
It was Fisher's Mine at 77th, east of 66th. And they, you know, we had some issues early on, you know, they thought zero discharge meant just their mine de-water, and I said, zero means zero. You don't have any stormwater discharge off this site here, and they do have to put some higher berms around it, but those berms will be taken down when the mining operation is over with, and it'll be sold, just like the dirt that's dug out of the hole.
David?
So can I ask you just another question on that? So the Fisher Mine, you felt was one of the better mines that held their water on-site, did not discharge it even through the two hurricanes. What was it in that mining operation that you feel we should have in our regulations that would make that possible for all other mines? If the Fishers can do it, then why can't somebody else do it, too?
It requires a rule and a requirement that it's zero discharge, that includes de-watering water and stormwater.
Which we don't have in the rule today.
Up to and including the 25-year storm event. If that's the case, you don't have a consumptive use of water, because you have zero discharge off-site. Now, I've heard it mentioned today that there was a loss, a net loss in water. Generally speaking, you're either going to have an intense agricultural operation in these areas where you have a Water Control District. And according to my sources, being Dr. Brian Bowman at the experiment station, the difference between a golf course and an open lake, given non-intense wind events, is about the same. You know, the evapotranspiration off the grass in the landscaping, on the golf course, is about the same as the evaporation rate from the lake. So, you know.
It's a wash.
You're in a net-zero difference. Now, if you're talking about a xeric scrub upland, there's a lot of difference. But most of our bridges have either been hauled off, or they've got an interstate highway sitting on top of them, and there's not a whole lot of recharge on left in this county.
David, you mentioned that one of the troubles was the enforcement. Who is, of the runoff into your, into your system, who is responsible for that enforcement?
Today, it's.
Or is it?
It's Tarbes at the county. We have a county stormwater inspector that takes his nephelometer out, checks the discharge at the point of discharge, checks the background, but I have just learned that a good portion of the Indian River Farms Water Control District's waters, which are waters of the state, have been declared outstanding Florida waters by St. John's, so that means zero NTUs above background. So, you know, they're going to have to do a lot better job than it had been, they had a 29 NTU.
Well, how do we, how do we put a boot on them, David? I mean, how do we?
Enforcement is the problem, then. Craig, I really don't want to go to enforcement today, I'm sorry.
The county deals with it now, the same way I do. You know, if, if you've got dirty water coming off sites, turn off the pump. Well, you can't tell me to turn it off. Turn it off now, or I'll put DEP in St. John's in your back pocket.
I think that if we add something to the rule that refers to no, zero discharge, it's, we eliminate.
You eliminate.
All of that, and it's a whole lot easier to enforce than the quality.
But still, you got the enforcement issue.
Well, if they can't discharge any water, and they're in a Water Control District, just like mine.
It's a big issue.
I will dig their entrance covered out, and there won't be any need for them to mine.
Okay, well, thank you.
We went offline a little, David, but thank you.
I do have another comment regarding that. My, in my professional opinion, you will have adverse environmental impacts if you prevent all discharges from the mine site, because even in a situation where you have ditched areas, I have actual research experiment on sites where they have done agricultural ditches, and the wetlands adjacent to the mine, the mine site, which didn't exist when I was originally there, were fine with those ditches in place, with the actual sheet flow after rainfall events, and once the mine went in and they sequestered all mine water on the mine site, there were problems, and that was part of the problem. So I would, I would disagree.
Would you think that would be the case, if you, under the current rules, there's mitigation? Would that be the case if you didn't mitigate and you had to have a certain distance from that, whatever that distance is, from the wetland with, from mining?
I'm not sure what you mean by mitigation. I haven't actually seen areas where they.
I think St. John's allows you to dig the wet one out and replace it in another area, you can negotiate it.
All right, well, if you've got depress, if you've got depressional wetlands, and you've got under those depressional wetlands, connections with the underlying aquifer system, and you dig a hole somewhere else and stick some plants in it, you have not, you know, recreated that wetland that was destroyed, so, you know, that's a problem. I also did.
But is there a distant, is there a safe distance? Or is there measurable distance from certain wetlands that these, that a mine could be dug, whereas if it's on the same property, you could continue to hydrate?
Well, I think that goes back to, you know, the issue of.
The design.
There is no cone of depression. You've got to figure out where that impact is going to be aligned, whether it's going to be, you know, running a certain distance north-south, and you may be able to have very little impact, you know, in areas where it's not spreading out from subsurface features, but I think you will find, you'll create significant problems if you have a zero discharge, and I realize you've got water quality issues, and you've got to consider that.
Right, okay. You're duly noted. Thank you, Sidney.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else in the audience?
All right, Chuck, come on up here. Just because you got, just because he gave you adulations about your mine.
Charles Kramer, 10729, US Route 1, Sebastian.
Fisher expert.
All right. To say no off-site discharge, I think you would have to expand some of these, these operations to a large degree to get storage. I mean, you have to be realistic, even excavating a 20-acre pit, over a period of time, you're not going to be able to contain that water on the site unless you have a large amount of real estate to put it. And then the second thing that I would wonder what would happen there, if you were to create an artificial or man-made wetland by retaining that water, what would happen as the?
Happens every day in a water fur.
Right. That, to me, I don't know how you would work that out, it would be like a creation of wetland by legislation. I don't know how you would solve that problem in the end, because the last thing I knew, if you had a man-made wetland on a parcel of property.
It was a wetland.
It was no different than any other wetland.
That's right.
Another item that I want to address, and I think that was touched on, and I think Dr. Bacca, so I'd like to just kind of question you about that, you saw effects at the North County Water Plant, adjacent to the wellfields, which are located in the Floridian?
Yes.
And what were those effects that you noticed? I mean, they're adjacent to the county fairground, I haven't noticed any effects there, but I'm just curious.
There is a wetland system that is on the south side there, and it's had extensive impacts, and that's generally where they show up first. The trees are dead or in a severe state of decline, and you've got extensive Brazilian pepper that has come in, and Brazilian pepper is, is one of the very first signs you'll see after things like dog fennel, depending on what your system is. So it suggested to me that those impacts have been ongoing for a considerable number of years from the withdrawals.
The other question I have, I think you mentioned Hobart, the old mine that Hobart had, and most of that predominantly was a sand ridge, and was excavated away in the dry.
It was excavated what?
In the dry, it was loaded on trucks with loaders and hauled away, it was part of the old Florida sand ridge, and I don't know what the hydrologic effects would be from that operation.
Well, they, as a result of the mining operation, there were a number of, of open water areas that were created, and generally, when they do a mineral mine excavation, they will excavate an initial pit with water so that they can float the barge. Now, if you're telling me they didn't use a barge, someone else who's been here for a while indicated that they did, but maybe that's not the case, what?
A front-end loader. That whole place is done with a front-end loader.
The only place that was, that I've seen lakes excavated was the county built two water settlement ponds.
Yep.
On the north side of 77th.
Okay, well, there, there are like four or five, or maybe even six, open water areas there.
At Hobart.
In that Hobart area that, that appeared sometime after the original USGS quadrants were there, and it was my understanding that that was part of that mining operation, those pits that were put into that area.
Yeah, some money.
All right, well, let me continue along with this now.
Okay.
Your presentation, I've read a lot of your stuff on the evapotranspiration wildfires being caused by mining in Florida, and in the case of your most recent one with the open lakes and the evaporation factors in that whole presentation, would you consider that an exact science?
The evaporation figures are not my evaporation figures, those are from published studies that are from elsewhere, I simply took that data. So it's based on their data, not my data. The only thing that I was contributing was the environmental impacts associated with those, those open areas.
Right, but basically, you compiled this into a, a report that I'm sure everybody here has read, and is it an exact science presentation, or is it your theory?
It's not a theory, the, the impacts are, are real. What is not known is, the question that George keeps asking, is exactly.
The area.
Where those impacts are going to occur and how far. That, that is, you know.
That's kind of where I'm going with that, is it?
Yeah.
I would say, would you consider, as we sit here and talk about this, area-specific to this area?
I'd say it's, it's area-specific for each mine, but it's not a question as to, will it happen? It will happen, that's a fact. What you can't determine is, if I was asked to go out to a site where a mine was proposed, and, and I was asked to tell you exactly where those impacts were going to occur, and how extensive they would be from every angle of that mine, that would, I would not be able to do that.
You couldn't do that.
I would be able to look at natural areas within the vicinity of the mines and tell you which areas are most likely to be impacted, and, and which ones would occur, you know, almost immediately, but I couldn't tell you that it was going to have an impact 300 feet, you know. I think you've got buffer regulations based on a concept that the impacts are equally likely to occur in any given direction from a mine, and that's just not the case, you know.
Sidney, let me, and Bob, you can chime in on this, too, because you brought this up. Could you, if you, if we did, unless, the perfect world, we do the USGS survey of the county, we do this environmental audit, the infrared light and, of wildlife, could, could you do it then? If we had that in place, could, could it be precise enough?
Well.
If, would it be precise, if we had all the, if this, if you had the information of the underlying surface and then what the environmental area was, could you then predict, with a certain plus or minus 10% or whatever accuracy?
Well, there are two different things. I think Bob was not talking about prediction, he's talking about documentation, and what you want is.
What I'm trying to do is tie the documentation to your, I won't say theory, but your, your numbers and say, from an engineer, can, could it be created engineerially so that we could do this, or, or not? That's because, I mean.
Well, the approach that Bob was suggesting.
If we're going to spend the money, can we get the big picture?
What you would be able to do with the approach that Bob referenced, where you would be able to look at the impacts that have already occurred, you could look at existing mines, you could look at existing wellfield sites, you could document with infrared where that, those impacts had occurred. Now, based on that information, you could.
Knowing the hydrological underneath now, could you, could you then predict another area as to what would happen with, with some accuracy?
My, my opinion, and I'm not a hydrologist, I'm not a geologist, I'm a chemist, but, but I'm a scientist and I handle data. We don't have current data. We do have fissures, we do have cracks, you don't want to dig where they are, seismology will tell you that.
Well, I'm just trying to get to the point where, where, I think what Chuck's asking, which is only fair, is it, is from an engineering standpoint, we're telling engineers that they've got.
Dr. Bacca says that under the depressed, depressional wetlands and Cypress wetlands, there's, she's saying that there's karst structure or fissures or cracks under those.
Right.
The seismology will confirm that.
Okay.
And to what degree?
All right. What I was just trying to do is, and I think, Sidney, you understand what, and it's, it's an imperfect, I don't want to. It's an imperfect world, but I mean, the reality is, is there a way to tie all the data together, to come up with a prediction that's accurate from your side?
There are some things.
If not, then we got to work on it, but we got to live with the engineers we have on the other side.
Some things I think you, you could predict, if you, if you did the type of analysis that I think Bob is suggesting, where you do a spectral analysis and see where the impacts have occurred, you can, you can perhaps identify areas where you've got these linear features of impacts, and you could, I think, at that point, predict that if you are mining in this area, along those linear.
Then it would expand a certain way.
Then, then you would expect similar linear responses in those areas. Now, another part of the county, you may not be getting, you know, those same types of linear, you may be, you'd be getting linear responses this way as opposed to this way.
Les, is, in, from an engineering standpoint, do, do your doc, do you change, does your calculations change based on the structure, if you know the structure? I mean, would you be able to predict something, engineering, could you predict?
Mechanism, yeah, presumably.
So if we do the, would the survey give us that mechanism?
I, I'm doubtful, frankly. I'm, I'm very doubtful, I've read the USGS publications, and I just don't see all this karst under Indian River County, so someone's going to have to resolve that issue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's basically.
One more question, did, Les, in the, in the reports that you referenced, the FGS and USGS, how many actual, did they, did they actually do borings or seismic, or what were they doing in those reports?
They did both.
It goes all the way back to the 50s, and it's largely based on, on both, a lot of, a lot of borings, a lot of wells that have been installed, and just a fairly uniform, intact, half-on layer everywhere. layer everywhere with a huge pressure underneath it in Florida. If there were very many cracks in that aquifer, the water would just be squirting up because it's under 20 to 40 feet.
Well, do you know how many of those borings, those well sites or those borings were done in actual Cypress wetlands?
Well, I know, I know we've done some before, because the issue was whether there was a paleo karst feature underneath there, if you were going to put a factory or a house or anything else on it. And in some cases, there are, but I wouldn't agree that there are in every case. Sometimes you just get these circular depressions due to a, either compression and the overburden that takes place over time, or even just some variation in the rock, maybe some yielding there or something, but you don't see a...
You don't see fissures and cracks all the time under everything?
And I just don't think they, I'd have to be convinced that they're in Indian River County. I agree the Hawthorne thins. It definitely thins out towards the beach, but we're not, we're not really talking about that mechanism where salt water has a chance to mix out in the lagoon and the beach.
Okay.
This is where I get concerned, you know. I mean, you want to change the regulations or modify the regulations, but I think you need the specific science of the specific area. Because this, yeah, this isn't the whole of Florida, and Hawthorne deposit changes to the north, and it changes to the south, as do the aquifers where the Biscayne overlays the Floridian. And I think you need to be more specific. I mean, I respect Dr. Bacchus's theory, because I see it as a theory, but I think if you're going to base any type of changes of the mining regulations, it needs to be specific to what's under the ground here, because there are some things here that are unlike other sections of Florida. It concerns me that, you know, I hear this input and I hear your theory, and yet I say, you know, the playing field has to be leveled. We sit here defending ourselves as the mining interest, and I think that some of Dr. Bacchus's stuff may not necessarily apply to this area itself. And I think you were kind of in that, in that direction. We do the excavation here, we see the ground strat, it's pretty consistent. I disagree about a coned depression. There is such a thing as a coned depression.
Oh, there is?
Yes.
But I don't really believe it's applicable here.
I believe it is.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
The USGS study should give you that answer.
George, I have a question of staff, I think.
We've got to ask you.
I'm assuming that in the timeframe, and it's a question about timeframe also, I'm assuming in the question of timeframe of developing these rules and regulations, that there's going to be consideration, regardless of things that have happened in the past in Indian River County, there's going to be a consideration for the best baseline data that we can have provided for us for available monies. Is that going to be allowable in the timeframe that we have for completing these rules and regulations? Because it seems to me that that base data would have an effect on the rules and regulations that you write.
I'll take a crack at that. Assuming there's no new legislation that's going to preempt some of what we're talking about now, the current state rule, as I understand it, is that there's a maximum 12-month period of a moratorium. We've mentioned this in the backup material before, that we have a six-month moratorium that's up in July. There's no question in our mind that our work won't be done by then, and the Board of County Commissioners could extend that moratorium another six months, which would basically get you back to January, this coming January, would be the longest period of time for moratorium on mining applications. And so you're, I think your, kind of your point is that there may be areas of regulation that you'll be able to achieve in that timeframe. If there's longer studies and so forth, obviously you get out of that timeframe, and you may not have that data to work with during the moratorium period.
May I have a follow-up question on that? What about that hydraulic study that was done in 1988? Would that still be, the information still be appropriate to today's situation in some of the things that are going to be coming up in the next year?
Well, I think probably the one person here that's the most familiar with that is probably Jim Davis, and I think the aquifer element, the sub-element that we have now, actually referenced a lot of information from that study, from the 88 study.
Will that show the linear effects of a mine that we're talking about trying to get?
No.
No? Okay.
But would the new study show the linear effects of the mine? That was what, and I don't think it's going to do it either. That's my concern.
Hasn't too much happened since that 88 study?
You get a new study with seismics, it'll show it.
Seismic profiling, yes.
We've got to get a seismic profile.
You can simply specify that that's what you want them to do. And you can equally specify, I think, as the Commissioner suggested, that if you want a set of basic criteria to implement in your permits as conditions, you know, USGS certainly could do that as part of that study, but I don't think they're really set up, you know, on a mine-by-mine basis to run to USGS and say, what kind of conditions should we use? But I think they could produce, you know, certainly a boilerplate of approaches that would be far superior to what you've got.
Could I interject? The old study in 88 was based on well data measured from existing wells. The new study could involve seismic activity, which is what Lewis Murray recommended. That would really add tremendously to look for faults and to what degree those faults are. And the other thing is, part of the problem with this, you've got to understand that our county is peppered with artesian wells that are leaking, whether they go through the confining layer or not, they're coming, they're coming through the confining layer because they're Floridian wells. There's something like 1,530 of those, six inches in larger, but they're leaking sideways into this official aquifer.
Right.
And then when you dig the mine, it comes up through the well, goes this way and comes out that way. So whether it's a fissure or it's a drilled hole, you have that leakage. And, and our population has changed tremendously, the amount of agricultural use west of town. Perhaps there's less use of water by ag out there because of the attrition to citrus acreage. Therefore, we do need a new study, regardless of whether it's six months or three years. We need to get that benchmark.
Absolutely.
Duly noted. Yeah, Jim?
Jim Davis, County Public Works Director. Over the 30 years I've worked in the county, we have done a series of excavations, whether you want to call them sand mines or public works projects or whatever, many of them quite large, such as the 312-acre shooting range, the 100-acre North County Park, the 20-acre Lake 19, and the Veracocha State subdivision whereby we were working in an area that was adjacent to an isolated wetland. And in all of these type projects, whether we have used the material or we have purchased the material, most of the overburden you saw probably that came out of the Dickerson Mine went on many of my projects in this county. Any mining operation is going to find different qualities of material coming out of that operation. Initially, when they remove the overburden, some of that material is not good quality material. Perhaps it has more silt or organics or even clay. And that material is sold at a very cheap price, usually to me, with the county, at a dollar a cubic yard or $2 a cubic yard, and we use that throughout the county. But I think the point I'm trying to make is that when we talk about uniform radial drawdown around the mine or linear drawdown in the vicinity of an excavation where dewatering's occurring, some of this material could be segregated. And particularly, what we did in the Veracocha State subdivision is, we were told, because we were working adjacent to a wetland, to build a vertical curtain wall of clay material to isolate the wetland from the excavation. And that curtain wall, or that somewhat vertical layer of clay that we put there, reduced the drawdown around the perimeter of the area. And it was a good use of the fine clay material that we couldn't use in other places. And quite frankly, I get very frustrated at much of this fine clay material being used on developments, because in the South County area around 13th Street Southwest, we're finding horrible problems, where developers are throwing this clay on the surface, water's not percolating off the lawns, people are unhappy with their drainage, their yards are soggy. And some of this material coming from these mines can be segregated and used to prohibit and reduce the lateral influence of the drawdown of the water in these areas. And I would encourage you to take a look at that. I'd be curious as to Dr. Bacchus's experience on use of the fine clay materials in the perimeter of these excavations, and whether they do reduce the linear effects of drawdown or the radial, more, I guess, continuous, uniform effects around...
Would that be, we have a rule that would say that we would do that? I mean, is that the purpose of this?
Well, I think when a mining permit comes into our office, you know, they do soil borings, they usually know the quality of the material, they know if they have fine clay material, it's called either A8 material, it's classified material, usually there's a uniform soil classification. And they know where these clay materials are. And their objective is to get rid of that material at a cheap price or to dispose of it. I'm just saying, if it can be used to create a perimeter vertical curtain wall, so you don't get some of these drawdown effects, I think that could be beneficial. I'm not a groundwater hydrologist, but I've worked in the dirt for 30 years, and I've, you know, I've worked with this material that is not good for development and other marketable purposes.
Jim, what determines the depth of the barrier?
Pardon me?
What determines the depth of the barrier?
As far as the soil horizon, what are you talking about?
Vertical wall.
As a vertical wall. How do you make your wall? How deep?
Well, that depends on the depth of your excavation and actually the depth of the wetland soil. Usually, we do a boring in the wetland, we do borings in the excavated area, and from a cross-section, you can determine the elevation of that vertical clay layer you want to put in there to segregate the two, so that the excavation doesn't draw down the wet one and destroy the wet one. And, you know, sometimes that's 10, 15 feet, 20 feet, maybe.
Well, you have a formula that could be written into a regulation.
I think, I think it could be some criteria established based on the soil borings that are submitted with the application. They have to submit soil borings.
Guidelines you could give us, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate you telling us you were cheap, too.
Jim's inexpensive. He's not cheap.
Okay. Anybody else in the public here to comment? If not, I'm going to close the public here. If you've got comments, I'll just let you go anyway. We're just, because we need to talk to staff. Stan, I don't know, you've got, the one, we have, it's 4:15. I know we want to get out of here within a reasonable amount of time, but we do have a list of recommendations in your report, the world out, the public has not seen, that address a lot of this, and I'm just wondering, looking at what you might think would be, you're looking for some guidance from us, but what you think might work? As I was, do you want to run through the issue, existing regulation deficiency, and maybe decide the importance of it? Or, I know Sidney had in the back of her report, there were changes to permits, whether we address those today, or you do it in writing. I mean, I think they should be addressed, item to item, to make, you know, from a clarification standpoint, but...
Right. Well, we tried to do, and by the way, these are, I mean, some members of the public did buy copies.
Did you have something, sir? I'm sorry, you stood up? I didn't see your hand. I didn't see, but come...
30 seconds.
Yeah, come on, just tell us what you're thinking about, because we're trying to run through issues with them now. They've got some specific recommendations. None of you all have heard yet.
Jim Gallagher, I live at 766 Holden Avenue in Sebastian. Right now, I'm thinking about dinner.
I'm thinking about cockmail hour. That's the difference, I guess.
What I did, I really, I've got to say, I enjoyed this, because it was such a civil discussion. And if you attended some of the meetings that I've attended...
It's going to be, we appreciate it, but what's your point?
Okay. I would urge you to include a more continuous monitoring. I've heard people here say that the monitoring goes offline after about two years, and I'd like to make sure that you do...
To reiterate the continuous monitoring.
Also share, people like the St. John's Water Management District, which doesn't require information until after the permit has been granted, apparently.
Yeah, it's not granted, it's just, right.
Would you please share that information with some of these other permitting groups? Maybe the Palm Corps of Engineers, according to what the other young man was saying, would benefit from that. Apparently, they do some things that need to be corrected.
I think the groups share the information. We're just not sure if they do anything with their own knowledge of the other group, which...
Well, Sebastian would be without the wonderful preservation of wetlands that he's got.
The next Sebastian City Hall meeting, City Council meeting, maybe you could just go. We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Okay, Stan. What would you, you've got everyone here, I mean, how would you like to proceed yourself to gain the knowledge that you want?
I thought you were the guys that were going to get all the knowledge on this, but the, some of the, the staff's assessment of the existing regulations and the deficiencies that's in the report, and that's again, available, available online, that we went through and put in some potential regulations, a couple of things, you know, come to mind. There's still some, I think, some informational issues that we need to, we need to get. One of the approaches that I've kind of heard a consensus on almost is, and one of the approaches that I hope was clear in our report, DEP and St. John's have experts in these areas that a county this size doesn't have. And aside from budget and staffing issues, you know, one approach is, and it's this way with other kinds of regulations with the agencies, the county and the local level can be the eyes and ears for, and we work a lot with other agencies. And I think to the extent that there's better information that the county has about what the other jurisdictional agencies are requiring, and our own observations in the field and reporting back can help. We can, we can help them do better housekeeping.
What you're saying is then, is that you think that maybe the information or maybe the requirements the other people have are not bad, bad, but we could do maybe a better job here, or we could act better on their behalf to enforce or to come up with, to see what they're, to follow their track?
Yes. I think that's, and I think that actually does occur in practice with our staff, but could, I think there are changes that we can make, and...
We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can use what we have, but we can...
Maybe focus a little bit better.
Yes. And our, and just our experience as staff has been, you know, with other agency staff, they're glad to get local information and local input and, you know, other eyes and ears on the ground and work together. And I just think that's, that's kind of a smart and obvious way to deal with some of these things. So, and I think we'll talk a lot about enforcement and compliance. One of the issues we get into with, if there are impacts that are occurring because of mechanical dewatering, then you can turn the pump off. Discharge, you can, you know, stop discharge, you can pull bonds and so forth. But I think to the extent that there is non-mechanical dewatering, if you start seeing vegetation dying off, there's no pump to turn off. You've already created that situation. And if you've changed a hydro period, you don't get the wetlands back. You know, there's, there's the issue, and it's still kind of not clear to me necessarily the magnitude of that and how you correct that.
If we go, if you walk back in time, one of the issues was that we have historical and baseline data, better historical baseline data. Now, that can start with USGS, and it can be done on the, this infrared survey, but at worst, if we require monitoring wells, which are a year in advance, of pre, you know, pre-mining conditions rather than after the fact, at least, that's data that we would have that we don't have today, that should improve the situation, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so that's what, I don't know how you, I don't want to get hit later from Dr. Bacchus, but I'm not sure how to deal with the non-mechanical part of this.
I don't get it.
So I, you know, I think that the reality is, is if you deal with the issues that we can deal with, it's got to get, it'll improve anyway. But, so I mean, monitoring a year in advance or something like that has to improve the situation, because we don't have it. So I think that's, you all need to look at maybe other guidelines or other rules from other counties in that regard. If you have the hydrologist's report required, which was one of your recommendations, I thought, and we kept hearing today that, you know, you'd have the information here. Now, how we read it and how we deal with it, I'm not sure, but...
Well, I think the approach there, and what a lot of our recommended, potential regulations are, is to specify what has to be in a hydrological report, what has to be analyzed, including vegetation impacts, and what are the recommendations from the professionals hired by the applicant as to how to handle that, how to monitor it, and if impacts start occurring, how to handle that.
But we don't do that now. But we don't do that now.
We don't have those specifics, that's correct.
But that, we could request it, because they're already doing the report, what we would be getting is a copy of everything.
We need to use it, man.
Where we could, we'd have more detailed data. Okay, all right.
Stan, I think the, on one of the issues you were talking about, when you have tree loss and things like that, to me, it's complex because you need to show why that tree is gone. But to me, if somebody cuts down a mangrove, you've got to put it back. And I think associated with these regulations, if there is a shown proof that you've got loss because of the mining process, they have to put it back.
That's got to be in the enforcement section.
Well, it's just overall, I think we all recognize, and Roland has a lot of experience with this with code enforcement, cause and effect is difficult enough above the ground.
Yeah.
When you get undergrounded, I'm sure it's even more difficult to try to, to try to figure out and to pin down, and you're right, it's very complex. It's hard to predict, it's going to be hard...
Roland, you just got to auger in, buddy.
Put on his x-ray vision and take a look.
There's a good fall guy, auger.
All you can really do is probably go with likelihood and probability is as good as you're going to get.
Since you're looking for specifics, one of my specifics would be that we recommend that they do the seismic study along with the infrared slash aerial study.
Who's that?
USGS.
The county, county.
The county recommends the USGS, do that study, that's physical evidence we can have on hand and use as a guideline and show the fractures if they're there, if they're not there, whatever.
I think that, and I don't know, Peter, if this is within their, what their purview or not, but I mean, I think what you're saying is we need to look into that.
Yes.
We need to, whether we move ahead will be up to the commission dollars and cents, but...
It's a recommendation from the board.
But I think what they're looking at with guidelines is if we think something is important enough, we want them looking at it and we'd say, look into what's there, I guess.
I think the other, the other issue is if that study's going, and that, that study has a lot of other benefits, obviously, too.
That's right, there's a lot of peripheral to go along with that.
And has longer range, but I think the question, while we have the experts here, is if you don't have that report, what kind of data do you need? Can you get some sort of, you know, underground profile that an applicant can provide around the immediate vicinity of the site and look for any of these fissures or, or old artesian wells that could be leaking? Any of the, all of those issues, can you, can you have an applicant do a mini-study essentially around an area and, and what would be the, what would be the parameters of that study and go forward with?
You had a recommendation in here about the submission of a site plan for mining operation that depicts and implements recommendations specified in the hydrology report. Wouldn't that, would, I mean, if they get into a site-specific or a site, what does that mean?
Well, I think, and I think some of the questions get to what, what is required in that hydrology report? What, what would you have someone look at and what's possible to have someone look at, reasonably speaking? And then what, what do they analyze? And it could be, you know, some of these various factors in the area, you know, what, what type of wetlands are in the area, how far away are they? Can you get an idea of what's underground in the immediate area of a potential mining site with, aside from the, you know, seismic profiling throughout the county and so forth?
Well, Jim said...
And I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but we have experts here, maybe.
Jim said he does borings and can find that out. Do we already do borings prior to mining?
Les, do you hear that? Do you understand what he's asking?
There certainly are, are situations and conditions where we have to do a significant amount of geophysical survey work, sometimes fairly expensive work. So I think if, if the site seems to indicate the need, given, given your state of knowledge now about the geo-hydrology of the county, I think, I think you can require a reasonable amount of that. I mean, it's not that much more expensive than borings and test wells and things like that, it's just another added component to give you additional information.
But it's something, I mean, that's tangible, to Chuck's point, though, those are all tangible, physical.
Yeah, I, I think the way, the way this could be, the way this could be...
Test, I mean, with something we could sink our teeth into.
May be codified, is you, is you say what it is you need to know. You need to know what the impacts are going to be on wetlands within a certain distance of your property or something like that, and then provide, provide an analysis based on, based on all the data that you have, which would include, you know, seismic surveys, other...
If we said that we thought that was a good idea, Stan, is that something that you all could take and run with, that you could create your criteria, some criteria for? Because I don't think, I don't know how we're going to say, go look at a quarter mile or a half mile or, but I think...
Certainly, we could, if that's an approach, then, then we would take, we would take that and try to, and research that.
That's a reasonable approach.
We're starting with the assumption, I think, that whatever you do in your sand, on that sand mine, you must do and confine to your own property. Is that, would that, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah.
I mean, all our rules and all are based on staying on-site in some form or fashion now. Sidney opened the door to the possibility this goes wider, much wider than we realize now, than just your site, even though on the surface, your, your engineering says it will stay on-site, and that's the part we'll have to grapple with, I think, down the road. But I, I think by monitoring wells and just putting more monitoring around, maybe we'll create more data and the, at least open, we see the possibility of what's coming, but a geophysical study, I mean, I don't, we can't, you know, there is a cost factor here, there's a way, you know, this is material we do need, we don't want to add the cost burdens to the world here, but I mean, I think reasonably, if it's reasonable, which you say you've done in other places, then I think that we can add some things.
What's reasonable? It's totally subjective. The other thing, Jim, you were talking about a one-year, two-year pre-work monitoring program, is that an actual fact now or is that something you were thinking of?
Well, one of the things that, that we have in our process that's a good checkpoint, actually every year, is there's the annual mining permits that are issued and re-issued. So that, that's a checkpoint that we can use in the process and we can look at what the, what the actual lake depth is and the profile of the lake and get, get readings like that.
I'm talking about new permits that are coming in.
Right.
Do they now have to do a one-year pre-work study to see what, no?
No, no, there's, there's no baseline data, and again, I can't speak for the agencies, but, but Dr. Bacchus is correct, our, we came to the same conclusion in terms of, of, some, some may have baseline data, some particular applicants, but the permits from the agencies seem to just start at some, some permit, some period after their permit is issued.
So what they give you is a theory of their model, their model is a theory of what will or may happen, because they don't have any hard-line evidence that that's in fact the, the truth.
Well, I'm, I'm sure they have some data they're working from, but what we could do is specify a minimum bar for the data they're going to use.
That's where I'm going, that's where I'm walking, you're hearing me already, because I'm, maybe we could do something that there's a, a pre-study, prior to any work taking place, you do drillings to see what...
Well, that's what he said, the geophysical survey would do something like that.
Well, I want something more than just a, yeah, it's that, that's rock there and that's sand there. I want some physical study that shows me that that data is there. Jim, you know where I'm going?
They're going to do, they're going to do the, the test wells and, and the seismic, right? That's part of this program.
Yeah, that'll, that'll come along.
That gives you the, a long way towards that.
That's...
And I would think the other thing that we might want to do is recommend from here that we, that the county commission look at getting that USGS.
That was what I was, I agree, my whole heart, we've got to have that, no matter what.
Start right there and we recommend to the, to the county commission that...
Well, you may not be able to use it now, but it's got to be...
I think they, they need to look at, we're...
It's a big dollar item, yeah.
Right, yeah, they can look at it.
I think the area studies, Stan, are important, I don't mean to, to diminish that, but I think that, given the environmental issues, the current times, that there's, there's a reason that the county should do an extensive baseline data, whether it's seismic, whatever all of the issues are, I think the commission needs to make a commitment to determine that information for us for the future at, and I know it's going to cost quite a bit of money, but I think that, I think that's extremely important that we have that available, and then the, you know, area studies will fall in line under that. But if we don't have that base information, kind of spinning wheels, I think.
But Sidney put it all in perspective here, what does it cost for one eight-inch or 12-inch well? About $700,000. That's what, half the price...
Half the well.
Yeah, half the well across what your study will pay for your study.
He didn't as well, no, that's not, that's a little high.
Well, maybe, it's a pretty good, okay, so it's two wells. My point is, it's not that expensive when you look at it.
Right, what, what I'm hearing is, is a recommendation on a county-wide baseline study, look at what, a requirement, specific requirements for a hydrological report and analysis with recommendations, and how far can that go with reasonable cost?
Using the data that they present anyway, trying to expand your look.
For the area, and we can, we can, we can look into that, and I think also, the, as far as surface water, you know, no discharge with some, I mean, certainly you have some, some caveats there, I mean, we have a lot of areas that...
At worst, let's look at no discharge and walk backwards with, to Dr. Bacchus's concerns, rather than try and build a flow, slow the flow down and then work, so, start with no discharge and go backwards if it's necessary, and the other was to look at the hydrological impact on wetlands on-site, because that's the distances and what you do if you have an on-site wetland, would be how you deal with that.
I can't really go off, are we thoroughly confused, you guys?
Well, they have, if you look at, you know, if you read through their recommendations, it's, this is really a very good report. They, from A through N, you all have touched on just about everything in the, in your...
Everything we danced through.
In your recommend, your current recommendations here, I, I can't add anything much to them, frankly.
Well, then get rid of this meeting, let's go.
Can I ask a question, please? Please?
Go ahead, please, please.
The seismic, on the seismic profile, I, and I don't understand the expense of this, how, how in-depth it is, is this something that the applicant would be able to supply when he comes in and says, okay, here's the seismic profile, this is, we know the linear drawdown, it would be affected this way, so our plans are to do this to...
I think what they're talking about is getting the seismic of the county, and he would be able to draw it from the information of the county.
Well, I'm looking to see if the applicant...
Can the applicant do a small area around the project and I, and we had to defer it?
To see if it would actually have a linear drawdown impact.
Yeah, there, um, yes, the simple answer is yes, there are, there are relatively inexpensive techniques, including ground penetrating radar and electromagnetic imaging and even cross-hole seismic, that, that can be done if, if the site, you know, if you feel that the site really requires it. I think you ask, tell them what you, what information you need to know to feel comfortable that the impacts aren't going to extend beyond their boundary, and the rule might even suggest, you know, methods that can be used to obtain that information. And it's done, I mean, it's, it's done in a lot of ways.
Is that, would that be any, would that be probably more site-specific or more accurate site-specific than having a county-wide study?
Yeah, because you still are going to have some site-specific issues, I think, after you have the county study. I mean, if you've got a lot of, a lot of wetlands on the property, a lot of these closed-circu depressions, you...
See, you're dealing with an entrepreneurial engineering company founder here.
Looking to, yeah.
So I mean, it's not a problem, it's just three more layers and, you know, I...
That's what you told the commissioner, you know, he fits right the check.
I know, I...
I was wondering if any of this was done, like the wild turkey, for instance, proposal, did they do any of these tests that we know of?
I don't think, I don't think they ever got that far, frankly.
I mean, they would put in a proposal to do the mine without doing this, then?
Well, when, because none of this is required.
We, we've always asked...
For their own, for their own knowledge of what's there.
There you go, being realistic, Andy, Doc.
Look, from a business perspective, you're going to do what you have to do, you'll do the minimum.
I mean, is there, is there sand or rock under there? I mean, you'd think you would know that.
I've lit a fire, I'm sorry. Chuck, what, what have you got?
You do have some, you do have some geologic information, it's just not required by the county, but other agencies...
Well, that's what we were talking about, we, if we require you to give this to the county, then they can...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what you want to do in duplication or what kind of staff you would have to have.
I don't know, we're going to let them figure that out.
Yeah, to review it, I, I think I talked to Stan about that before, you would actually have to have staff, you'll be duplicating the service of the water agency or whatever, but you have wetland transects that are submitted prior and boring information and water table information that are submitted prior. Now, in some cases, there is no prior water level monitoring, however, I think Commissioner O'Brien brought up the fact that on North Cypress, it wasn't required in the permit, but in January, we started it anyway, because I like to have past history, you know.
I understand, and that, this, you know, from a downside to current rules, if you want to consider it that, if we say one year prior to starting, you're going to have to monitoring for a year before you can start.
And I don't know how that, how that works out in the construction schedule or the permitting schedule, but what I've seen lately, you know, the permitting schedule...
Right now, we've got time to get a year or two under our belt around here, I think.
But I, I don't, there is, I don't want to, anybody to have the impression there isn't any pre-excavation information or geological information, there is, it's just, it's not submitted to you.
Right.
You know, okay, I'm done now, you go back to what you're doing.
Yeah, we heard that before.
Any other, I mean, if, anything, other questions or thoughts on your part, Stan or Roland or Bob, I mean, as to what you might like to...
Other than what we already have in the report, again, I just, right now, unless we hear otherwise, we, you know, one approach is that's, we're not experts in this data and, and we're just going to set the bar and continue to use the agencies. That's it.
Well, I mean, I think what you're...
I want to make one comment. I think Jim, Jim mentioned something about the, the clay curtains and was kind of, I think, asking if I was familiar with that, I think, um...
Or if you thought it would work.
Right, I think the Corps of Engineers had that concept on another site with a much bigger mine, and they tried and ran into problems because of lateral flow of groundwater. But I would be, you know, very receptive to, if Stan wants to help coordinate a site inspection for me to go out with Jim and, and, you know, see the areas that they've done and see if I can tell, you know, based on what I'm seeing, whether it looks like it's been effective. I'll be happy to do that for the same low, low price of nothing that I've already...
Same price we get paid, yeah.
I'll be happy to do that, I just can't do it right now.
I mean, that's what it's supposed to prevent, is the lateral movement, that's what he's talking about, so...
Right, but if, if you've got groundwater flow that's lateral, that's so, you know, so strong that it's, you know, breaching that, but, you know, I'd be more than happy to do that a little bit later.
Okay. If this is, if this is the, if that's the case, then I think what, within the guidelines that you all have, I don't, you know, I don't know, other than trying to get this data, if we maintain the current relationship with the other agencies and then you focus maybe the way you've informed them as to what's going on, do you need the other hydrologic information? I mean, I, you work better with the hydrologic information or not?
Well, we'll set the bar as to what the experts are going to have to have as far as data and what they're going to have to analyze, but there's still going to be experts that are going to be handling the data and looking at, and that, that's the approach we're using.
What, in essence, you're going to be telling them, you're asking them what you need to monitor, so they would give you guidelines as to focus for them, that's...
I think part of our goal is to be able to look at a report and ask intelligent questions and have that expert explain it to us, how this is going to meet our objective.
Okay, I mean, that's what I was...
Because that was one, one thing that you did mention, that the staff occasionally has misinterpreted that, too, and so you, I don't know why that happened, I was, but, you know, is this education or...
I'm just, I, I wouldn't even know how to interpret that, so I don't know.
But I mean, I, I think there's an educational thing here, too, within the county staff, or in all of us, actually.
I think that's what Roland's talking about.
And if we could, somebody actually could look at, and could look at a tree like Dr. Bacchus does, that would be helpful, too.
One more, I got one more question. If you had a really good baseline data that was developed for Indian River County, wouldn't it, wouldn't it, and I know we're, we don't want to talk about areas, but wouldn't that baseline information show people where mining probably should occur?
Like first, second, or third?
And then they could have that information up front instead of somebody buying a piece of property, coming in, finding out then that it probably shouldn't happen there, and we get into these controversies? Is that possible?
Right, the data could show that there are areas that you don't want.
That's what, that's the important one, where you don't want to do.
Where you don't want it, but the, the, the material's going to dictate where the mine's going to go.
Well, that's a different, I think that's a different type of survey, seismic won't tell you what's, whether it's limestone or coca or rock, I mean, I don't, I don't think.
No, seismic won't tell you that.
And, and one of the initiatives, I think the state is seeing, it keeps coming up, And, and one of the initiatives, I think the state is seeing, it keeps coming up, and it was recommended, is that the state map aggregate resources, and so that, that may be occurring in the next few years at a statewide level, and, and that might not include Indian River County or much of it.
Right.
Not a major...
Okay, I...
One thing I would like.
Yes, ma'am.
Could some of us ask for a list of that slide that you had, Dr. Bacchus, of the inadequacies of the permitting process that we have right now?
I believe, didn't he copy that, or you, you got that whole slide?
We can email you, we can email you the whole hour point.
I would, what I was going to ask is, is I would think you, I think, in his light, good, bad, or indifferent, I think that you all should address each item in some form or fashion to, back to us, because I'm, and we went through it very quickly, and there's some of those, some of the things I think that might be addressed already, that are, that we indicated or not, and it's just, you know...
You mean that list of questions, is...
Yeah.
I'll be happy to do that, I just, I was overwhelmed.
I mean, I'd like the staff to go back and forth, because I think we find a lot of times in presentations, and this is no criticism, you or Les or anyone else, is we do find that some things are presented sometimes that are not exact, that they, we do address, and in fairness to the staff, I think that they ought to go A, B, C, D, because if, if we may pop up on something else...
I have to admit, I, this is a very impressive staff, you have an incredibly impressive staff, they are extremely organized, they are...
Still awake, sir, what can I say?
You know, and, and I've dealt with a number of different county staffs, and this is a very impressive staff, so, you know, there is a learning curve, it's a huge learning curve, you, I think, figured that out, and, and they're, you know, snapping, too, so